Five minutes.
Yeah.
Fifteen should be our last. They can come in. Just couple. They don't have a forum. But they don't have the forums. Yeah, item number seven is on. Unless.
I think there's, but I thought that.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I'm going to call them right up.
Yeah, welcome back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good. Good, how you doing? All right, see ya.
Is he here?
Yes.
Very good. Even met my parents. Oh.
Rick, is something burning?
No.
It's very strong, whatever it is.
Okay. The sound is terrible.
All right. Everybody please rise, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Good evening, everybody. Two quick agenda announcements, item seven is going to be delayed until the next meeting, that's the joint meeting with the housing authority. And then I am going to take one item out of order, I'm going to recognize our state delegation, let them speak ahead of public comment, just to respect Senator Eldredge and Representative Hogan's time. And so we'll go to public comment right after that, so.
Did you want to do the remote scripture or something?
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm all in. Practice, everybody, give me a second. I know. All right. Next thing, no, no, thank you. As a preliminary matter, this is select board chair Jeff Swamber. Let's see. Good evening, this open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom, some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely. And we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs. And we recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions. If anybody online, please mute. Thank you. Inviting each by name to find any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you are participating by Zoom via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with their members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. And for items of public comments, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes each, thank you very much. And now let's turn to the first item on the agenda, and I actually want to take a moment at the top, just to thank everybody who reached out during my recovery. And in particular tonight, to thank Justin St. John for taking on the chair responsibilities, as you can see, she reminded me what I need to do tonight. So Christine, thank you for handling that responsibility while I was incapacitated, so. With that, as I just mentioned before we did the remote reading scrap, I'm going to invite Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan to come and talk to us about the of where we are with the state budget and anything else that they would like to update us on. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you very much to the chair, to the select board, and I'm administrator. Thanks so much for having Representative Holden and myself and Jeff, great to, great to see you here and great recovery, so.
Thank you.
Is that a dog barking? So, yeah, so happy to come before you as the legislative session has begun and hopefully you've been following that. You know, budget, budget, as discussions have begun, Governor Healy has proposed her budget. I just handed out the cherry sheet estimates, this is from her proposed budget. You'll note that the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act continues. You know, that provides some more aid for the Maynard Public Schools, be the first to say that, you know, there's a need for for more, and I know that's something that I know the House and Senate often looks at is increasing the minimum aid for people. Because that generally provides more direct support to communities like you're as well as advocating for more funding for special education, circuit breaker is really critical support for ELL students. So we recognize that there's a number of other areas that are, we have a bigger impact for major schools than the Student Opportunity Act. I think both the House and Senate is also very committed to increasing local aid, so unrestricted general aid, so again, the Senate goes after the House, but but I'm certainly advocating that on the Senate side. And I think really, besides that, I know that the communication from the MMA about advocacy for more funding for chapter ninety funds, it's always a you know, back and forth, I think the, I think it's for $300 million for this year, 313, yeah. So certainly we'll advocate for that. You know, I think we're in a better position to provide more funding for roads and bridges because revenue continues to be very robust, I think the benchmark for yesterday involving both Ways and Means committees was was a billion dollars over benchmarks, that's quite significant. And then, of course, there was the millionaire's tax that passed that is estimated separate from that to be about a billion a year that would be committed to education and transportation. And I particularly emphasize that because it's really important to emphasize, and I think the governor already did this. And her budget is sort of creating a trust fund, a so-called lockbox that all of the money from taxing millionaires would go into a separate fund for education and transportation. That's very encouraging, we want to keep our commitment to the voters to spend that money as was explicitly named in the ballot initiative for those two purposes. Well, we would really encourage feedback from municipal officials, from those, you know, the general public is, you know, sort of generally, first of all, from a transportation point of view, is making sure the Metro West, that this area generally gets its fair share of transportation dollars. Obviously, you've got commuter rail nearby in South Acton, I've got Regional Transit Authority, which Rep. Hogan is really the men is advocating for. Rail trails.
Sorry, and we got a mute out of it, it's very good, please continue.
We've got rail trails that are continuing to get connected, including the Bruce Freeman rail trail, which is making progress throughout the region. And of course, roads and bridges, et cetera, so getting feedback about what would have the best impact for minor residents on transportation. And then on education, I'm really excited that the momentum's already building on early education, so universal pre-K as well as public higher education, greater investments in public higher education. I am the Senate sponsor of a bill, a debt-free college, which would make community college, state university, and vocational school free for all Massachusetts residents. So I'm certainly advocating for greater investments in public higher education, so would love feedback on that, again, not only from municipal officials, but from the general public. And I think other than that, I would anticipate we will take action this session on climate, you know, further combating climate change. I certainly hear, and I have a group called the Read Advisory Council for my whole Senate district, is clear, clear goals and clear guidance from the state government about what every city or town that needs to do to meet its climate emissions goals. So certainly something I'm advocating for, and I think the governor is looking to increase her budget in a number of areas to hire more staff and to implement these laws, but also to better communicate the cities and towns, what can be done at the local level. So that's sort of my update, and thanks so much for having us and for any questions after Rep. Hogan's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Senator, I'll try to make this brief, but interesting, or at least information that you can use. I wanted to be sure to let everyone know that the COVID extensions were passed in our most recent supplemental bill that was passed. Remote meetings for public bodies are extended until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. I think we want time to look at that and see how we want to codify and felt that extending it was better than trying to settle on a path to to codify, because I think we'll be working on that this session. Of how we might do that, we hear from people, we know we need that, we hear from residents that they really want that to become part and parcel of of town government. Take out wine, beer, and cocktails until April first. Expanded outdoor dining until April first, both of those, of course, being twenty twenty four. And then we did make remote notarization procedures permanent. Those were were able to really get our arms around that, and we know that that was also something that was wanted by the small business community and others, so we made sure that happened. Jamie was able to, I think, describe very well the Fair Share Act or the Millionaire's Tax in terms of looking at revenue. We know our consensus revenue is forty point four billion for this, for this coming, for this coming year as we go into the budget, and that, you know, the Fair Share Act does create a two separate pockets of revenue that hopefully will be used only for education and transportation. And one of the things I'll be referring to a little bit later here is the fact that I'll be putting together a transportation summit with the senator and other representatives up and down the four ninety five Metro West partnership area to try to become and present a more unified regional transportation and present also sets of priorities, whether that senior transportation or other areas. You know, from roadway projects to the transit authorities and connecting all of them together, because right now we have five separate regional transit authorities making circles in each of their areas, which gets people a little ways, but not a long way, so that's one of my goals for this year is to sort of present and know what we're asking for in terms of of transportation dollars. And we know, and I think I said this before, we're looking at potential recession, but everybody is continues to be cautionary about inflation and how that's going to affect. And then, of course, the debt ceiling debate in DC is troublesome if the newly formed majority Congress were to to not not pay their bills, it would put us in a terrible, terrible situation. And I know that we've talked here then about the cherry sheet, Jamie was able to speak to that. And that that was very, very important as we move along, I know that, again, talking about the MMA and and chapter ninety and, you know, moving from two hundred to three hundred millions, certainly those are discussions that are happening at the State House too, as we move through the budget process, and I know that that for both houses and Senate Ways and Means, there are discussions ongoing on that, and how we might be able to to, you know, do what we can in those in those regards for for increases for that. I just wanted to sort of review the earmarks for the last legislative session, able to get from Maynard on its million dollars. We were able to provide regional transportation, van service, wastewater treatment infrastructure, economic development bill for Old Marlboro Road, the water treatment facility, I think we're waiting for those dollars to come through the doors and other things like food security and food banks through throughout the two-year period as we were looking at offer dollars coming to the state. We were all so reappointed to be Speaker pro temp. And honored to serve district and humbled to be reappointed. And as our speaker and and the legislature lays out our plans and priorities for the coming session, I'll do my best to articulate my district's interests, concerns, and issues, and the issues of my constituents, and we'll seek to build consensus in a path forward from the pandemic and the issues that we face right now to a full recovery. I'll be working on passing PFAS legislation, which I wrote, it came from a PFAS task force. And I'm hoping that with that, an act to protect Massachusetts' public health from PFAS will be an important first step foundational to dealing with PFAS, and we just saw it in the news yesterday, where fish are being affected in our waterways, and really important to be dealing with it. I'll also be starting work on the Twenty First Century Farms Commission, which is basically looking to looking at our farms in our area and beyond and seeing what we can do, help them thrive and enter the twenty first century and beyond. Looking at agricultural education, renewable energy, economic development, and areas that are that are very important to agriculture as we as we move forward. And again, a regional transit summit. I'll be working and the senator as well and other members of the delegation with the four ninety five Metro West Partnership to bring together the region's electeds, transportation professionals, key stakeholders, to really investigate the strengths and needs of regional transportation. I think that one of our weaknesses is we don't have a good way to ask for what we need or ask for what we want. I think if someone can make a case for an East West rail that we could easily make a case for better transportation for our area twenty six miles west of Boston, I think we need to do that, and I'm hoping that that happens this session, especially to move towards those allocated funds that might do a whole lot for us, so. Those are the issues that that are going to come up, and those are the things that got done last year, we really do look to you know, to do better, this year, we will be coming off of ARPA, and that will have an effect on I think the economy and the way that we're going to be spending dollars, but always with an eye to the district and love to hear what your thoughts are, what your needs are, and I know we don't have a great deal of time, just want to stop there, but thank you.
Thank you, questions?
Quick comment, I think directed to Jamie more so. Fair Share Act comments, first off, I applaud the governor's initiative on education relative to especially the opportunity for adults to get education for free at community college, everything else, and I really, I really do support that, I think it's important. I think one of the frustrations that voters and those of us at local level get, however, is that we were hopeful that the millionaire's tax, so-called, would trickle down somewhat for local education. And where we are really burdened here in our small community on trying to fund local education. And the fact that when I reviewed the governor's, you know, I know there's more money coming for education per se. When I reviewed it, Maynard's not going to see much, and so it's like another disappointment for us, and we are struggling to find ways to to grab a thing, so any opportunity, and I know you guys do this all the time, and that was my second comment was after I would say, any opportunity that you have to advocate for Maynard, especially the education aspect relative to the fact that we don't get much compared to what the needs are, what schools say, and I don't say get much, we get a hell of a lot. And that's what gets into my second comment. This last year, the two of you, the benefit that you brought to our community is amazing and incredible, and we, I speak for myself, and I'm sure that my colleagues agree, and the community members agree that they the opportunity that we brought to us.
So.
The community, well, whether it be on, you know, water and sewer type issues, things that people don't necessarily look and say, haha, look what we got. But if they saw it on their bill, they certainly see it, and they saved, you guys saved us so much, thank you, thank you, thank.
Thank you very much, David, yeah, I appreciate that. And I guess the only thing I would say about the the millionaire's tax in that revenue, your point is very well taken, is I think because that revenue, you know, the, we won't really get a clear indication that it's going to be a billion dollar a year until until the tax filing is done, so you know, April fifteenth, so. I think whether the governor or probably to a large extent legislature, you know, we're not going to be spending that money until there's a greater assurance that it is going to be indeed a billion dollars a year, but I think you have a great point is that that because one of the core missions of the Mass Fair Share is education, we want to make sure that some of that goes through K through twelve schools.
You know, to for the Student Opportunity Act, there was a task force sort of buried in amongst that talked about looking at formulas. And those towns that sort of almost make it to extra monies for for demographics and never quite get there. And really, Maynard was a perfect example of not quite making what need, you know, what numbers they needed in order to get the extra help they needed, even though they were so close. And I'm going to go back in after after this meeting and see where where that is and what might be happening. So many things sort of got left behind in COVID that weren't, you know, up and up front and on fire, and so that's something I'll definitely go back and look at and see if we can have that discussion, whether it be a task force or a working group, I I know at the time that it was going to happen, and so we can see what happens.
Actually, I believe that, I believe I've seen your notes on on that task force from before the pandemic, so thank you. I want to echo David's, David's comments regarding, thank you to both of you. You know, before I got involved in in local politics, it would never occur to me that I would be able to have a relationship where I could reach out and and talk to my favorite senator, my state representative, and feel heard and feel listened to and and know that they're fighting for the town, that they're fighting for us, and they know what we need. So I also do want to give a pitch for the three hundred million for for chapter ninety. You know, unfortunately, it is one of those things that roads kind of like, it's kind of like water and sewer infrastructure kind of gets forgotten, it's not the most exciting thing in the world. But when push comes to shove, and you don't have enough money to maintain your roads, and you have to put additional money towards it, it's the thing that gets left off because you're funding other things, so any any little bit helps that we can get to be able to keep our roads going.
It would be great to hear what what inflation has done to those numbers too, because I would imagine that that the numbers that you have and the money that you have has become less valuable than it once was with with the inflation that we're dealing with right now. And it would be great to get a note of some type, okay, to be able to speak to it. Yeah, and those are the discussions, we really do realize that inflation's really done. By I D, especially for something like that, where you're getting a percentage of and then it becomes much less of a percentage, what you can get to do with it.
Yeah, but but thank you very much for all the work that you both do for us.
Yeah, I think everything that you both just spoke to or conversations I've had with with minor residents, so it's great to know that you're both advocating on issues that that people here in town really care deeply about and will really improve their quality of life. Especially the education, our school committee would especially be pleased to know that you're speaking to this special school committee and special education circuit breaker that that has come up. Of course, climate initiatives as well, and chapter ninety, and the school committee also has spoken recently about the remote meeting policy, so that extension is isn't quite important to them as well. And the PFAS issue as well is one that I've been tracking and my scientific background and I appreciate the task force, and I'm looking forward to seeing the next step on the legislation, and I think one of the silver linings from the pandemic is the renewed love of outdoor dining, and so glad to hear about that as well, and Maynard in particular. I think, you know, we have a great string of restaurants and to be able to enjoy them outside in the nicer months, it's fantastic, and it's been a great improvement for our town.
That has been, that was the house, so we're we're hoping that this time.
I'm hoping they will too. I I agree. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say we're going to have a couple of presentations later this evening on senior center assessment, and so I know you both support our local seniors. And anything we can do to help that population, one idea that I've floated, I know this is a bigger project than, you know, this particular legislative session, but we have the MSBA program which helps towns fund schools, one idea I've heard is that a program that would help towns spare, share cost for senior centers and things like that. A legislative item like that would be immensely helpful for a town like Maynard to provide the space requirements that our seniors deserve, and so I know that's not a single, you know, legislative section, but something like that.
With uh members and and um, you know, anything that we can do to increase programming and.
Yes.
Increase the ability of seniors to have places to go. It seems like there are. Choices, there are some choices on the table and forward to doing anything I can to, you know, uh, increase the possibility of. Of uh having having a home that that really works for our seniors, temporary or. Permanent, but either either way to to increase that would be would be wonderful. And I'm happy to work in any way I can to make that happen.
Fantastic. And thank you for your support. The the last issue I just wanted to speak to is, and I know you both worked diligently on this as well as housing. Um, and housing costs are are, you know, rising and making sure we can keep people in their house. Um, as costs rise is incredibly important. So just want to make sure that, um, and I know the governor has spoken about that a lot as well. Um, and so when I keep that, it's a focus on a priority for all of our population. And I think that's a state issue, right? So housing anywhere can help keep the housing costs down even in Maynard. So it doesn't need to be a minor development. They go back and forth, they they cross town lines. So um appreciate your your continued diligence on those issues and the ones that you've spoken on. So. Thank you both very much and uh appreciate working with you and looking forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you. Appreciate that as well. All right. See you. You have a great evening.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the work that you do. This department is a difficult job. And I know that you do it with grace and elegance, and we're just so grateful for all of you and for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I was Googling something about PFAS the other day and and it it papers came up.
Very good. Leadership on the. Okay. So um, we will now go back to item three, which is public comment. And so I just have a. Couple of quick announcements. We do have a fairly long agenda um and several important presentations to review tonight. Um, and I know that there has been a fair amount of discussion, good evening. Um, around the Green Meadow School. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware that there will be another meeting tomorrow night specifically to discuss the Green Meadow School building project. Um, and I, there is going to be a period for public comment at that meeting, correct?
At the end of the meeting.
So and okay.
Right. So I think there's it's going to open the meeting, there's going to be a presentation, some questions for the board.
Yep, boards.
Four, three. Um, and then after that, public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, or question.
So that, I know there is a Green Meadow uh building item on our agenda later, but I think that will be relatively cursory. We'll save the primary discussion on that for tomorrow evening after we've heard that presentation. Um, if you are unable to make that meeting, you're of course welcome to make a public comment on Green Meadow now when I open the floor. But just wanted to let you know there will be that opportunity tomorrow night at the end of the meeting as well. So that being said, I am now going to read. The public meeting script, because now I've now started, what's that? Uh, not that, I'm sorry, the public comment script. So the board would like to hear public comments. And if there is further action that is required by the board, chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda, depending on the comment, the board may. Uh, if we are able to, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to need to deliberate on the matter. Um, and then again, if you want to comment on the Green Meadow, knowing you can't make it tonight, we'll do our best to convey that to to the discussion tomorrow evening. So I will start with any public comments in the room. Um, and please remember that are limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments within the room?
Yes, please.
Uh, just a second. Okay, um, all right. Then I will go to public comments uh from uh people participating online. Sarah?
Yes, thank you. Um, and I apologize, Jeff, maybe off topic a little bit, but I'm going to have to work.
Sarah, could you give your name, your name and address?
Sarah Measures Seventeen Sunset Road, Maynard.
Please continue.
Um, yeah, so I am addressing uh the Green Meadow School, so I'm sorry, it's slightly out of the flow here. Um, so. I would like to ask the select board to immediately reconsider the decision to have a natural gas heating plant in Green Meadow School. Uh, please reconsider ground source heat um option. We are living in a rapidly changing world, uh but some things are certain. Maynard will be a lot hotter in five years' time. And per the federal and state goals, we will increasingly use electricity drawn from an ever greener grid in our homes and businesses. The plan's current plans do not adequately address these coming changes. Maynard is currently writing a climate action plan to address climate change. So it is inconceivable that we would be adopting a plan to dump additional tons of CO2 into the atmosphere. The plan for a natural gas furnace is a mistake. Well, generally supportive of the need to build a new school, I'm I'm ready to join with others to campaign in earnest against currently proposed school. In addition, I will be campaigning to pass the no fossil fueled school warrant at the next time meeting. If if you act immediately, we do have time to generate a new plan and stay on the design schedule. If you do not act, there will be a giant mess in the fall. So I would really like us to use our time and energy to come together to generate a plan. That takes greater care of our pockets, our children, and our world. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And and as I mentioned, the select board will be reconvening tomorrow night alongside the finance committee and school committee. Uh, and the um Green Meadow Building Committee for discussions on that project. Any other comments online?
So can I make it just a quick clarification regarding?
No.
Um, but she wants the select board to reconsider the vote. Um, for the fossil fuel, and that's actually not a select board vote at this point. That that's for the building committee. The building committee, um, the building committee did vote on that. And ultimately, in April, the building committee will be expected to move the SD design forward. And then the select board will be expected or hopefully will vote that as well. But until then, it's not the select board that has voted on this particular piece. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Very good. And the meeting starts at six thirty tomorrow, six thirty tomorrow.
Yeah.
Good. Is there an end, a stop time for it?
Uh. At the latest, um, I think at the latest nine, hopefully.
Well, I hope that the residents that do show up are able to speak and that it's not that the main part of the meeting is not covered by presentation. And therefore, the friend, the residents who may have questions that didn't attend tonight are blocked from being able to speak. It's very important to me. Uh, a lot of the comments I'm hearing relative to that issue, and we probably shouldn't be talking about this because it's not on the agenda right now, but is uh. The fact that people have not been heard at those meetings, at least that's the perception.
That is the perception that it's been said.
One at a time, one at a time.
That's the perception. And so I want the opportunity for people to be heard so that they can't continue to say they haven't been heard. And if it's if it's that limited to ten minutes of a two hour meeting, that's not being heard. They should have their opportunity to be heard.
I agree with you, David, and I will say that I reviewed two of the building committee meetings this past weekend um that are recorded are online. And multiple times it was said that we have heard the concerns. We hear the concerns, we understand the concerns. So it is said multiple times, we do understand. So as someone who's in the committee, but what I will also say, and I'm not saying that there's ten minutes. What the goal of this meeting is, is that it's a tri board meeting, is something that the school committee, one of the school committee members. Um, requested several times. So what we are hoping is that the questions that we all have, because we all represent our constituents as well. So the questions that we have a chance to ask, finance committee, school committee, and select board, that we have a, we have a chance to ask our questions of. The designers and the OPM and the HVAC engineer and everybody else that's going to be there. We get a chance to answer, ask our questions. It could be that some of their questions are answered. And then. Obviously, we'll open up for public as well. So that's that's the whole point of it.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate that, but I don't consider myself an expert. On big school building or construction projects or whatever. And there are a boatload, I could use a different vernacular, but there are a boatload of people in our community. That are stepping up saying, I am an expert, listen to me. And it seems to be falling on deaf ears from what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Those are the people, I don't want to ask questions tomorrow because I'm not an expert.
But you don't have questions.
I I want, hold on, let me finish. I want the experts to ask questions so I can hear.
We, 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 I will remind us, we have this on our agenda later this evening, and we will have a meeting tomorrow night. Steve, would you like to say anything?
Nope, I let it go.
I say I'm an expert at a lot of things, David, but I don't. When I claim it. When it suits, when it, when it suits me, I claim it. So to to suggest that everybody that's claiming to be an expert is an expert, is not.
All right, we are in public comment. I'm gonna. One last time, is there any other public comment online or in the room? Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to item five, which is appointment, an employment agreement for. Uh, our new fire chief, Angela Wallace.
Hello, this is Andrew Zemicki and.
Greg.
Let's argue.
Greg, would you like to step in?
Yeah. So um, this is Angela Wallace, uh, the currently, hopefully in a couple of days, will change to the full party, right on the acting fire chief. And it's Tony Tower Department uh last week or the week before. Um, and so um over the last week or so. Um, I've been negotiating with the with the sport of HR manager, Stephanie Duggan, contract uh for the fire chief. Opposed to Angela Wallace, and she has agreed to turn to the contract. And I'm presenting to the public now for the ratification by board of the session. Um, so I'm asking, I'm recommending two actions, one to ratify the contract as presented and two.
Very good. Any comments? Um, oh. I will move. Well, just I actually have a comment real quick. I'll just say I was not able to be here for the the assessment or your interview. But I think that my colleagues here made absolutely the right decision. So I think you're going to do Maynard proud, and I'm I'm looking forward to working with you. And I I know I said that privately, but I wanted to say it publicly as well. So congratulations.
And I will move to appoint Angela Wallace as fire chief commencing March seventh, twenty twenty three for an indefinite term. And to approve the employee agreement with Angela Wallace as fire chief for a term of March seventh, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty six as presented. Uh, providing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor? If we can hand, very good. Congratulations. And now we have a full time police officer appointment. Would you like to come down?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here to present Marcos Olivera for appointment as a full time police officer. Uh, he was very uh impressive uh in his interview and his paperwork. Uh, my assistant said, I. Is usually one error, a small error, whatever, she couldn't find one. Uh, Marcus is a, you know, throughout the interview, it came out there, a very determined person and a hard worker. One of the uh ironic things is, you know, he he applied for the police academy last year, and he had difficulty with the run. And he actually came to Maynard High School at the track to work on his run. And that's how he really got to know the town and liked the town uh that he was in. So Marcos grew up in uh Brazil and immigrated to the United States where he's living in Marlboro right now. He is fluent in reading and writing Portuguese, which is going to be a very, very big plus to us because of the growing population and community and. Uh, to have somebody to be able to translate and to just reach out to that community that, you know, we haven't had. So that is going to be a a major asset to the department. Uh, Marcos is currently in the Quinn Singman uh community called Police Academy, and he's looking to graduate in April. So um he won't, he won't be sworn in tonight, he'll be sworn in after he uh graduates the academy. Uh, if you have any questions for myself or Marcus.
Uh huh. Question, your comments?
Marcos, why Maynard's track?
I used to do deliveries around um this area, Maynard, um, Sudbury, Marlboro, Carmichael. And every time I looked at the track. I was like, wow, it's it's just perfect. And it's on my way. I can stop the delivers and do some run. And that's why uh I was like every Saturday with my family, my wife and daughter. Uh, they were supporting me uh. Every Saturday. So um, I feel like being part of the town since then. So um, I could have applied for Marlboro too, who were hiring, um, but.
Man, it's got a better track.
Yeah. That's right.
Soon with better bleachers.
So thank and welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations. I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to appoint Marcos Oliveira as a full time police officer for an indefinite term, starting March eighth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Yes.
Why didn't you bring the dog?
The dog. He's not at the game twice. Very like it all, I could have it up there at halftime, you know, killing them up there. Yeah, they they couldn't miss.
All right, then. Um. Do you, do you want to describe this one, or should we have the town administrator describe this next item?
No, um, I.
Okay.
Uh, as part of the the new uh police reform in the post, uh, every recertification for an officer, uh, the chief has to attest for every officer. I can attest for myself, so I need the next higher up people to attest to my uh character. And that I, in all the requirements and everything that uh we were at for the post certification. I don't need a disclaimer or any of that. So it's a. I hope a formality. That it's. Test my good form factor, but this is, this is one of those new things that you'll have to do every three. You know, if my my certification, you you uh, everybody, every officer that was on in twenty uh twenty, at the end of twenty twenty, early twenty twenty one. Got automatic certification. And A through H uh had recertified last June thirty, by June thirty. This year is I through it appear I have to get recertified. Uh, that where my name falls and no, I have to be recertified this year. And they they sent this out earlier with. Which is better because last year it was kind of quickly uh done. So to get it by recertified this year, everybody on the bottom. And um, everybody A to H uh came through with no restrictions and I don't expect uh any problem. With anybody else.
Very good. Any questions or comments on this item?
No.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve the PISA officer standard and training post attestation. To good moral character, fitness for employment as presented for police chief Michael Noble, Michael Noble.
Not be a lot plus years. My God.
Second.
Very good. Uh, all in favor? All right, very good. Thank you very much, Chief.
Very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So the time has been a ninety five.
Congratulations again.
Okay, as I mentioned, uh, item number seven will be um moved to the next agenda. And so we'll move on to. Number eight, which is a joint meeting with the council on aging. Yes.
Now, I have a point about anyone who's covered.
Yes, you meant.
Move forward with it. It turns out that it's not actionable. We deal with that later, but we are down to two members on the committee.
I see.
And we need another member.
Okay. Uh, yes, and so. Greg, my understanding is that our initial interpretation was incorrect, that the position that we were scheduled to appoint tonight is a select board appointment. And therefore does not require a joint meeting. If it was the elected position, it would need to be a joint meeting, but this is the appointed position. So do you have an opinion on whether or not we can take this? So do you have an opinion on whether or not we can take this item on now?
This is not remaining term of infected.
This is the remaining term of elected position? Oh, I'm sorry. I misinterpreted. In that case, I'm pretty sure.
Coincidentally. Previously. It's the remaining term of an elected.
In that case, I'm pretty sure we need a joint.
Yes, that's why I'm meeting. The charter does require that elections.
By.
Yeah, I'm saying this, but not, I know you. But do you care? The charter says that, that, um, elected positions have to be built by a quorum of both, uh. The body that has vacancy and the select board has the pointy authorities.
Does it actually say the word quorum?
How else could I keep it?
Yeah. Yes.
So the majority of the eligible members of, to commit.
I, I would recommend my interpretation, which is a majority of the current members of the body. And I understand there are three current members of the five-member body. My, I, I just. I don't disagree, but, but I'm, I.
I'm likely to be available in the future.
Then I recommend that person submit a letter of resignation so that we can fill that position well, and then you'd be down to two bodies. But as of right now, you have three active members.
But I disagree with the, the, the charter does not mention more.
Very good. So Mr. Chair, that's my.
I, I, I concur. I'm sorry. I did not realize it was the elected position, not the appointed one. So I do think we need the quorum of the body. So I think we'll, we'll have to wait. Um, let me take another look at the charter again, um, this week.
Now we have two members who can do payroll. But now we've been into the month. We cannot authorize warrants and we cannot meet the state and federal reporting requirements.
Okay, we will, we will do what we need to do by the end of the month to get the appointment to happen, but I think we'll need a quorum. So we'll, we'll have to take this offline and figure out. How to make sure we can have a joint meeting with both bodies.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but that's, that's the rule.
Sure, how you'll ever get it for him. You understand? Only have two standing members, literally.
If you can't get a letter of resignation, then the point of order you can rescind the appointment of that, of the, of that.
It's gubernatorial.
I'll have to see town council on this. You'd like, I, I will.
Really need to happen by the end of the month.
There's a lot of stuff we're.
Big trouble, that's it. What we can do to keep the.
I understand. I understand.
Okay. I, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item eight, which is a joint meeting with the council on aging. Um, does the council on aging have a quorum here?
Yes.
All right, very good. Would you like to open your meeting?
I remember.
So Paul, okay, I'll, it's Paul, the chair, our guest. Can you, can you just? Just say that you're opening the meeting on aging, then ask for a roll call of your members present.
Okay. Uh, we'd like to open the council on aging board meeting. And roll call with the members.
All good.
Great. Very good.
Are there any online or are they all here?
Okay, okay. And my understanding is we have two presentations. One is, um. Uh, an aging in Maynard presentation from a Dr. Coil and another is a, um. Uh, assessment from that Jack McKeen will be presenting. Which one will we be looking at?
Best first.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Works for me. All right, Jack, the floor is yours.
Okay, guys, two seconds. Bring up. Yes.
And we're just pausing to bring up the slides right now.
Yeah.
Jack, while we're waiting, you wanna introduce yourself and end up the conversation?
I am Jack McKeen, representative and member of the Maynard Senior Center Focus Group. And. While we're getting the slides ready. Um, I can go ahead and sort of. Set the stage, if you will. The purpose of the presentation tonight is really threefold, to bring. For everybody who's involved in this, and there are multiple entities to a. For the same page, a common understanding. To share the work today of the seniors and focus group. And to ask the support of the select board for the.
We need, you just, please tell them to be quiet. Yeah, we do have to keep it open.
Okay.
We can continue.
Um, third item is to ask the support of the select board on the aging assessment study. We do the presentation subsequent to mine. Uh, I would also point out the slides are up. There's no intention to go fairly quickly. Summarizing the slides, if you will, but those online. The material is part of the select board package, so if you can view it at your leisure at those times. So thank you, let the. Want to take you back. To the senior center of two thousand and twelve. And summarize this slide in the following way. But in two thousand and twelve, senior center, which is in the middle. Was a difficult location. At a part-time COA director. Virtually no programming. I could maybe take the virtual off that. There was no programming for seniors. And minimum communications in terms of the activities of the council on aging on behalf of the representatives. The thing that came out of the study that was done at that time and reported and approved here by the select board in two thousand and thirteen. Led to the decisions at the bottom. And I think we underestimated a little bit the importance of those decisions. Because in particular. The hiring of a full-time COA director was an order of magnitude improvement. On the services available to a, the COA community and seniors. But also led to the creation of an interim senior center located within the golf course clubhouse. Excellent. Move to the present. Uh, today. Demographics really are unchanged. The fifty-five or sixty, depending on which board you wanna pick. Is still the fastest-growing segment in our community. It is also the largest segment of the population of the town. We're three thousand, give or take. And. If you take nothing else away from the presentation tonight. The second bullet. The programming and communication success led by a full-time COA director. Is really what's driving all of the activities now. Creating demand, which exceeds the space that we have available. A critical component. Now, the senior center focus group has now been formed to continue that advocacy. Next slide please. And a simple way to summarize this slide, that you see the words repeated several times, advocacy on behalf of seniors, both short or interim, plus long-term. And the activities of the focus group are complimentary. And if you look at the very last bullet. There are now four entities, the COA director. The COA board, the friends of Maynard seniors. And the senior center focus group. All of whom are represented here tonight. There's a slide at the end that I'm not gonna bother going to, that if you get to it. Lists of people. So that you have a specific list, if you wanna look at it at your leisure. Excellent. Current senior center, and I suspect many people are aware where it is, what it does and so forth, but some may not be. There's about sixteen hundred square feet available. And the picture that you see there. Uh, happens to be a craft or art kind of thing, and you can get, you know, fourteen people in there if you crowd them in. But. The point I wanna emphasize on this slide is just for the activities that we have today. That the COA director is using activities at the Elks, at the library, at the Boys and Girls Club. And one that's available and workable, the actual golf course clubhouse, which is not part of the senior center as a very name. Next slide. Um, again, summary of this is. If you have a fitness activity. If action or motion is required. You can get maybe six or eight people into the space, and that's about it. Ten if you really don't move very much. Um, if the, some of the more frequent things these days, yoga, Tai Chi, meditation. It's also fairly noisy if there are other things going on either in the clubhouse or even within the space itself, or the limit there as well. And. Obviously, when the summer season of the golf course is busy, sometimes there's just not parking space, so forth. That's outside the facility. But it still impacts things here. And the point that I wanna make is really the last line here, which is a statement from the COA director. Which basically says, if there are additional space, easily double, triple. By personal statement, which I can't back up with statistics, is that's an underestimation. Of the use that could be made of the facility. Next slide. Some of it's fairly recent and, um. We need to consider in terms of senior activities. It's not just diet, whether it's food program, it's not just exercise. But increasingly, with our senior population living longer, enjoying a more active life. Uh, sometimes by themselves, the value of socialization. The senior center becomes a place where meetings can happen, where social engagement can happen. And you can read the list in terms of maintaining cognitive function, longer life, better fitness, reduce risk of depression, safety, all those kind of things. It's a fairly recent thing, and we don't tend to emphasize what is growing importance. And the items here are not from us, they're from the State Office of Executive Elder Affairs. And from our favorite group these days, the art. People, uh, we have a long list of Massachusetts oriented kind of things. It's an editorial coming. Next slide. Uh, on this list. This is the list of facilities that the focus group has looked at. I'm not gonna go through them. You can read the list yourself, but I wanna add. In speaking with the COA director, she's been keeping a list kind of on her own over the years. Uh, so every time a potential building might come up, whether for interim or permanent kinds of things. Amy's List, partnership with Open Table, possible? Uh, perhaps a return to the sanctuary. Uh, the Grover Building, when I, I didn't, you know, was that gonna be a potential place? The former Courier and Chives Building, now I think it's Rise as opposed to Green Star. Recruiting School. Uh, the old digital credit union, one forty-one Parker. So in addition to the list that you see on the slide. Amy has been kind of monitoring things as it goes along as well. The common denominator here, uh, next slide please. Really appears, uh, in the short term, maybe the long term, to be middle name. Uh, there was a, I, I'm not sure my building numbers any longer, but, um. The. Building twelve was looked at, building eight. Uh, the focus group has been looking at, uh, building six, sweep one hundred. Next slide. That's a shot of the space. Next slide. A different view, sort of. In the other direction. Basically, you could get into that facility. Pretty much everything that, uh, we believe the senior center should require. About five thousand square feet, kitchen, office space, activities, so forth and so on. Next slide. Um, this was. An activity, and I'll make clear to everybody, this was not a town solicited RFP, so it doesn't need any of the requirements of that kind of thing. But in discussion with the automated people, this was basically an offer they were willing to make. But whether you lease for five years, four, ten years, this gives you a picture of the price. There were incentives upfront. But before anything could proceed there, there would have to be a classic RFP negotiation, so forth and so on. But that would be the range of things that, uh, could be accomplished that way. Next slide. Um, I would add a couple of words to this, but if I summarize the comments here. Provide our growing population of seniors. Larger space to meet demand for increased programming and services. That's really the summation of our focus, our advocacy, our activities and so forth and so on. And next slide. One of the things that, um. The focus group didn't engage with in terms of determining. The kinds of things that were available. And I'm going to use this slide as the transition to Caitlin, who I hope is online with us. Uh, Dr. Caitlin Coyle. Who does this kind of thing and the presentation you're about to see with, with her stuff is in the package as well. Um, they've done this many times and her presentation will address it, but. The point I really wanted to use this slide for. This is the one where we solicit the support. Of the select board to move forward with this assessment. So that's one part of it. There is a financial cost as well. And the entities. That represent seniors are committed to fundraising in whatever way we can, but in the end, we may need financial support, but that's on the table as well. But in the context of engaging, since you see the last line, UNAS is a state entity. So the town can engage directly without having to go through. The multiple bid formal process kinds of things. And. There are two or three other slides in the package, which are basically details that Caitlin is gonna get into anyway, so we won't skip those. And with that, we can move on to Caitlin, unless there are questions, wanna maybe wait till after her.
We wanna. Now we're wait, I think. Right. I think wait. So yeah, let's, let's hear it and then we'll collectively discuss both presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Boyle, can you hear us?
I can, yes. And I'm just wondering if I should share my screen or if the slides will be.
Yeah, we can.
Just give us, give us a bit.
Sure.
And we'll share. All right, I guess we're gonna share.
Okay.
Yeah, not letting me. I will pull it up.
We're not able to.
It's not, you know, he, uh.
He was gonna let her do these.
Okay. Dr. Coyle, we're gonna run the slides if that's all right. You just tell us when to advance.
Sounds, that's fine. While we're getting those pulled up, I can, oh, there we go. Great. Wonderful. Well, can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Yes. Okay, great. So, um, just a quick introduction. Uh, my name is Caitlin Coyle and I am a professor of gerontology at UMass Boston. I also, uh, direct a small research center there at UMass, uh, called the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging. Um, next slide, please. And we have been a center since two thousand and twelve, and our mission is to conduct applied research that informs. Communities as their populations become older demographically, that include, um, research on specific topics, um, that impact older adults seeking to age in their communities. We do a lot of things. Um, I, the two things I wanted to just mention about this is that since two thousand and twelve, we have contracted directly with, um, more than seventy-five cities and towns in Massachusetts, engaging. Their residents and collecting data about their community to inform, uh, planning, strategic planning and otherwise, um, planning and, and, um. For senior services specifically. And the other piece I wanted to mention is just that we. Part of our mission is service to the Commonwealth and also our sort of approach to this work is really collaborative and participatory. So we. Um, not a typical consultant in the sense that we go away, do some things and come back with a report. We really engage the community in the process from beginning to end. Um, and I, and I just wanted to make that a super clear. Next slide, please. So the project, um, the, one of the ways that we support communities is through a community needs assessment process. And there are, um, as you can imagine, a number of reasons why a community would take on a community needs assessment process specifically related to aging. But when, um, I've, I've had some conversations with folks in Maynard and my understanding is that the purpose of a project like this. Would be meant to identify, understand and prioritize the needs of older residents. Um, so that things that need to be addressed to maintain Maynard as a place to age well. So it's really wanting to understand what do people want and what do they need? So before we go, um, thinking about sort of. What kinds of resources or, or programs or, um, space or anything like that, really taking stock of what the community, um, wants and needs. And, and so that could inform, intended to inform. And, and so that could inform, intended to inform strategic planning, raise awareness of these issues more townwide, sort of inform other departments and kind of. Bring people together around this, this particular issue. And perhaps if, if it was um desired by the community to uh pursue designation as an age and dementia friendly community, which is something I can talk about in, in a little bit. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to present some very basic um. Demographic information about the town of Maynard, so um these data come from the twenty-ten figures are from the, the census twenty-twenty-one or from the American Community Survey twenty-twenty-one estimates. And then the twenty-thirty projections are produced by the UMass Donahue Institute. And so the blue bar shows you the change in the overall size of the Maynard population and the orange bar shows you the change in the fifty-five plus.
My February financials.
Um fifty-five plus.
I'm sorry, I could, if you're not.
If you're able to mute yourself, if you're on, on Zoom. Thank you.
Sorry.
What?
I know.
You have to do missmakers too.
Wait, somebody is not on mute, if you could please mute yourselves.
Looks like it might be, oh, okay.
There we go.
Very good.
Oh, now Caitlin's muted.
I think.
Got it, I got it.
Alright, sorry, we're gonna pull your slides back up, we apologize.
No problem. Um. Yeah, so, okay. So the, as I mentioned, the blue bar shows the change in the overall size of the Maynard population and the orange bar shows. The change in the older adult population in Maynard, um and the percentages uh represent the portion of the community of Maynard that is fifty-five and over. So um currently, or if we think about twenty-twenty is big, twenty-twenty-one is our most current um. Piece of data, we, we know that twenty-nine percent of Maynard residents are fifty-five and older. And the, the projections that we have um to twenty-thirty suggest that that will increase to closer to thirty-six percent of the overall population. And the thing I wanted to note here is that, you know, the blue bar, the overall size of the population is not changing drastically, so. I wanted to just point out that it's um. Uh it's not a function of a lot of older people coming to Maynard, it's really a, a function of people aging and staying in Maynard. Um and um and so that that, that portion is increasing in, in large part because people are living longer and also people are wanting to age in their community. Um but that is, as, as, as the population shifts, that that will still, will be a size, it is a sizable uh portion of your community and will continue to be um moving forward. Uh next slide, please. In addition to the size of the population, which is certainly significant, I think it's also important to think about the fact that when we think about fifty-five plus or sixty plus. Which are the typical ways we think about sort of older adults in, in our country. Um that there's a lot of diversity within that group, um there are multiple birth cohorts. There's a lot of people um with different lived experiences, different preferences, um different ideas of, of fun and social en- engagement. Um and it also is uh linked to this idea that people are living healthier lives, they're living longer, healthy aging is important to people. So it's not just about programming, um senior centers, in, in addition to providing the social programming are the hubs of information and, and resources about. Things like long-term care, caregiving supports and other issues that affect health and wellbeing. So it's really this idea that in addition to the size of the population, there's also a, a very, a, a, a changing. Uh dynamic of that population in terms of what they're looking for and what they need to age well and to stay in the community independently. Um so those two things are sort of the main um sort of rationales for the project. I'm gonna um. Jump to the next slide, please, and just talk very briefly about this concept of age, age-friendly community. Um as I mentioned at the beginning, that a needs assessment like this, in addition to informing the strategic planning. Of the um, the various groups in Maynard who are working towards the future. Um it's also would be served um to uh submit an application to become a sort of designated age, age and dementia friendly community. Which is um a designation that was developed by the World Health Organization. Um you, it is a, a broad concept of creating communities that are essentially. Um optimal places for people to age well, to participate and to achieve sort of health and quality of life and dignity. Um you can go to the next slide, please. And the dementia-friendly community is similar to that, i- it's really this idea that creating accessible communities for people who are aging. And all of that, that all, all of which that encompasses uh is a way of creating um sort of more, more livable communities. Um next slide, please. And uh Massachusetts, back in twenty-eighteen, Massachusetts committed itself to being an age-friendly state and encouraged every city and town. Um in Massachusetts to pursue this designation as they think about the future. Um currently, there are more than one hundred cities and towns who have committed to this and there are more sort of in the works. Um and so again, just wanting to highlight the fact that a needs assessment like this, in addition to serving the purposes. Um of the local goals around the senior center and, and senior services, it also would support an application towards this more long-term designation. Um and you can actually skip the next two slides, please. Yeah, that's fine, thank you. And to just um highlight the fact that um this age and dementia friendly framework is, it includes things like housing and transportation and respect. And communication and health services. It's really an all-encompassing, very global sort of rubric in which communities reflect on themselves, identify where they're doing things well, where they have an opportunity for growth. And they engage the community in putting together an action plan and sort of lay out ideas for how can we improve ourselves. It's really a, a community improvement. Process and it is a process. Um so the idea is that uh once a community decides to do something like this, they define it for themselves, so they think about what are the goals, the specific goals in, in their community. And then they would, the first thing they would do is conduct an assessment, and as I mentioned, this assessment would support that application. Once you make the application to the World Health Organization, um ARP here locally, Massachusetts is sort of the broker. Um and so you would submit the application through ARP and, and they would provide some technical assistance in terms of putting together the plan, implementing the plan and evaluating the plan and. One of the things I wanted to highlight about this slide is really this idea that it's not um a one-and-done kind of situation, it's not, you get the designation and then you're finished. This is really an opportunity for the entire community to sort of think about and absorb the ideas related to accessibility and livability. In everything that they do, in all of the planning processes and the, it's really sort of a culture shift in thinking about, as we think about. Um moving forward, um really thinking about how older adults um are engaged in our, our community. Uh next slide, please. So I wanted to just kind of get down to the nitty-gritty of the project um in terms of what the components would be. Again, um the figure here just sort of illustrates that the Council on Aging is much more than just the programs um. That happen day-to-day, they also provide sort of leadership and advocacy related to senior issues, they provide uh either direct services related to meals and transportation, but also. A lot of information and referral to help people get connected to the things that they need to age well. And um so that's sort of our, the way we really think about this, these projects as being very holistic. Um so the project components would include what we call a document review, it's really um going back to some of the. Existing plan, you know, master plans, housing production plans, the plans um that are happening in the community now. As a way of sort of highlighting and, and, and getting the context of the community uh right and to be sure that um where synergies exist, we can build on those. Uh we also do a demographic profile of the entire community, um including younger adults and two, um and that gets us details around sort of household income and disability. Um living arrangements and a little bit more detail about the entire community. We also do um sort of two types of qualitative data collection, we do focus groups, um these usually include residents of a particular. Um either a particular age group, they could be uh, uh residents who are uh currently caregivers. Or, or live in a particular part of town, sort of have something in common, we really want to hear more about their lived experience in Maynard. And one of the groups I almost always insist that we include is what I call a community stakeholder group. One of the, the challenges with this work um is that. Uh and, and you all, many of you are familiar with this, this issue, which is that there are a lot of people who don't come to the senior center, they're not coming to town meeting, they're not. Um gonna fill out a, they may not fill out a survey, they're not gonna come to a focus group, but they live in town and they are, their, their perspectives and their experiences are important, and so we try to bring together. Um the people who um have sort of contact with those more, more isolated or more vulnerable segments of the community, so people like faith community leaders and um. Direct care providers and real estate agents and bankers, the sort of eyes and the ears of the community, we try to bring them together to hear uh what they see as being the needs. Um of the community. And then lastly, the sort of main event is. Um and that includes um a postcard mailing, includes pre, uh self, uh prepaid self-addressed envelope returning to us at UMass. And we do this, it's, it is cost relatively costly and, but we um, we get very high response. Rates um given the population that we're serving, so typically. I always say that twenty percent is sort of respectable and we get, we have been getting closer to twenty-five to thirty-five percent. Response rates in our community surveys as of late, and so it yields really high quality um data on which to build from. So all of that information is synthesized into a report, it includes recommendations, it includes uh public presentation of those um, those results and those recommendations. Um to the community at large as well as, as to you all as the Board of Selectmen. So I, I included, next slide, please, I included um just sort of a visual um timeline, I think um. I just, so this is uh, I, I, we don't need to go into detail, but essentially um these projects take uh between nine months and twelve months. Um we do, we do our surveys either in the fall or in the spring, given trying to avoid sort of holiday time or when people go south. For the winter and also trying to avoid summertime when people are distracted. So that's really, those are the sort of the anchor points upon which the survey would be done. Um and we would um be doing that um. That survey and then all of the other pieces around it um in terms of the um final presentation, so. Uh what we have here is, is a proposed timeline of, of starting um. Uh in the spring or, you know, having the survey be out in the spring of twenty-twenty-four, that's all a little bit up to um some discussion, but. In general, just wanting to lay out that the timeline broadly speaking is about a year. And with that, I will close and um take any questions or uh engage in any discussion.
Jack, did you want to conclude with anything?
Well, this is the. Um Dr. Coyle, only other thing, do you want to speak to the cost of this or?
Uh sure. Um so the, the full project uh cost is approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Um that will depend largely on sort of what scope of work we settle on. Um but that's the approximate cost, that includes everything, um the mailing, the printing, the postage, the meetings, the travel, um all of that.
Uh how do we get from a estimated cost to a more exact cost?
Well.
Sorry, please, please go ahead.
Um I think. For me, what would be most helpful is, I, you know, I've had some conversations with various folks in the town of Maynard and I think. Um hopefully, just to kind of get uh clarity on what the, the real, the, this, the um. The scope of the work and just making sure that what I've proposed is in, you know, going to work for the group that's um. Gonna be using the data and uh so I guess it's, once we sort of get that understanding and um I can finalize um the documents. They, I don't imagine that they would change significantly. Um. But I think it would just be helpful to have a little bit more direction.
Payments could be broken into then. Uh that paid and also the payments were supposed, you could break them into parts, right? I, I believe you mentioned that back.
Yeah, so they can be, it can be, really be broken down in any um, any number of increments. Um we have not a lot of. So it could be, typically it's two, but it could be three, it could be over to a couple of fiscal years. It can be sort of repurposed dollars, there's a number of ways that people um, that communities uh manage that. But we're very flexible on our end.
Um, anything else, Jack? Uh, any comments from the Council on Aging? I know you've had a chance to review the presentation in advance of us, so I just wanted to see if there are any. No? Okay, alright. Questions?
Uh my, my, my only question is actually for Greg.
Greg.
Um if we were to move forward with this, do um, how would you propose that we do that regarding the funding?
How to pay work?
Yes. Let's cut right to the chase.
I think it's in context of the rest of the budget, in which there's another item layer that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I'd rather reserve, actually frankly, my recommendations if it's okay, but if I'd like to hear now, I can tell you.
No, that's, that's all right. Um I'm, I'm curious of whether, whether that, and I, I honestly don't know as far as fiscal practice, if that. Works to do half now and half now, or, or, you know, half of this fiscal year, half for next fiscal year. Um, you know, that makes it easier.
I mean, it.
I mean, it's cheaper, but you know what I'm saying?
Momentarily cheaper, yeah, so um. I'm reluctant to, so generally I like to pay for things in the fiscal year that occurs. Uh because it's difficult for me to make earhart promises, so to speak, for the future fiscal years. Um because of unknown, she's just unknowns.
Right.
So um generally, like I said, I, if whether it be thirty-five thousand or eleven, let's just consider that the ceiling. Then that's, then that's what I would try to appropriate for. But I, I would say um. Um even if we were going to split it up, it would depend on the terms of the, of the contract. Um and so usually, the terms of the contract requires that final payments are due, you know, upon the delivery of whatever the script serves. And, and Dr. Boyle's better hand.
Yeah.
So we could, potentially, if it was gonna go over fiscal years, it's, it's because the scope, it goes over.
It looked like that, it looked like the, the um calendar went into the end of twenty-four.
Yeah, well, this one, this one does, this is August twenty-twenty-three, did you, like, where the fiscal year ends at the end of June? So if it went over to July, then it would.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's okay. But anyway, like I said, like my purpose is to be kind of like, make sure you have a budget for the, the whole shoot.
Yeah.
Um. So as I said, like, I'd like to talk about it in context of the rest of the budget, because, because again, if I give a recommendation, that's, I would like to kind of give it. Sort of like in, in the terms of, of its impact to the rest of the budget.
Yeah, I believe I had heard from one of the members of um. The search, or maybe whatever the term is, and excuse me for getting it wrong, but the, you know, the group that's been working on this, that the mill. Owners or landlords had agreed that if there was any um, for example, I had asked a question, is there a kitchen? And the answer was, they were gonna help to actually build. So those costs would not be borne by the town of Maynard per se, but rather, is, is that accurate?
Hmm.
Okay. And a bathroom as well.
And the carpeting thing.
Yeah, so in, in essence, um and I saw the estimates that Jack presented to us here in the presentation, uh granted estimates. Um so really, the costs that we would be looking at, and I know this goes well beyond the doctor's um, you know, initial analysis. But the cost we would be dealing with is really literally rent to move in. Because the, the building would be ready to go, essentially based on what we, is that accurate? Okay.
Can I add some?
Yeah.
Perspective though. Um that may be the cost for the rental, but there are other costs for the.
Absolutely, and that gets to sort of another question.
Okay.
Success breeds expansion, success breeds the other needs. Um has the estimate that Jack, that you have uh completed, considered the need for additional staffing? For additional uh cost of pro- programming or anything like that, or would there be any such needs that you foresee? And I know it's really, really. Theoretical at this point.
The specific answer is, we believe that the corporate staff. Would be able to cover, just, there's more space for people to do that.
Mm-hmm.
There would potentially be um. At an expense to the degree that you bring in more paid instructors to run a greater variety. Of programs and courses, that not included with any of them.
Excuse my ignorance on this aspect, but is the, are many of the events that are done by the seniors, by the senior center, Council on Aging. Free of charge, or do they charge for participation?
Please, Amy. Please, go ahead.
Variety, variety of um funding sources for our program, senior sector. So you know, we have our general fund budget, we have a formula here. Um and with their diversity of what the expenses might be, the instructors, the business instructors, obviously, are paid and charged. Um, you know, we have events and there might be um, you know, a fee for grab and go lunch. So it's, it's all, it's all um, you know, diverse funding for, for, for different programming. If you, if you anticipate us moving to a, you know, a place in aging larger than, you know, members of the community. Definitely the programming part is important, if I would have to increase programming. I'll give you a quick example today. This was just a fantastic highlight. There was a brand new fitness class. I'm so damn excited. Fill the room, fill the room, twelve seniors. Fill the room, fill the room, twelve seniors, real brilliant class. Room is full. Okay, it's still full, and we have a hole in the middle of the room, I got twelve seniors in there. I'm trying to tell one of them, two of them, the sink is back there, there's a rug back there. Be careful, there's a senior up here, be careful of this all. The next thing I know, these seniors go home. I didn't see, I love them, sometimes the word seniors, people feel like the old, they go home. And the next thing I know, I've got phone calls with even more seniors wanting to join their class more than, and you know what? They didn't. Thank me, people who play in that class. And then it comes down to do I offer two sessions with them class? I can't afford it. So that's the case, boy, that's where the conundrum is, we're being.
So I want to.
Look to the impact, and that's about the funding in this space.
Jack, please go ahead.
Um, Dave, David, your question brings up one of the difficulties we have in managing, we're we're doing interim and future. And the request I will make in fairness to Coil, if we could finish the futures and the aging assessment for long term. That fair request so that we can.
Yeah, and actually, that's kind of my question is is, aren't the results of this assessment helping to answer some of the questions that we just spent a few minutes talking about? Doesn't doesn't the assessment help us gain some clarity on to of the many options we have to help our seniors focusing in what is best for Maynard? Which is a little bit about what we just started speaking about. Dr. Coil, is my, is that correct, my understanding of what we're expecting as an outcome from this assessment?
That's correct, so this, the assessment, the purpose of the assessment is really to um understand what are the needs and the preferences specifically of residents of Maynard? To inform any kind of future programming services, you know, sort of um sort of those decisions as well as um thinking about anything related to space.
Chris? Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna be asked to spend a certain amount of money for a um study that we definitely need. Who who is going to communicate with Dr. Coyle, when who is she going to get her information and direction from? Because she did ask that question to the end of her presentation, that she'll be looking for some direction and everything and all that other stuff, so. Though who of? The groups in the room are gonna be responsible for that.
If you're looking at me and we're.
That's for the money. Oh, right, it's someone's gonna ask us for the money, but it comes through your office to us.
Yeah, I'll.
That's the only question, only question is.
All right, I'll execute the contract, but I, so my recommendation is that the contract is managed by the council agent. That's and that's through the the council even director probably day to day. They are charged with providing and advocating on behalf of the seniors of the population. This is in service of that charge, therefore, I think the council on aging should be doing it. But that, again, that's another conversation I need to have with the director, because that's a task that I have to, you know, work, work out of there. It's not impossible, just answer your question, that's what I think.
Okay, he's correct, Chris. Can of the.
Thanks, Jack.
Senior Center Focus Group is an advocacy group, the brand independent nonprofit charity. Already the town engagement really has to be through the council on aging and director.
Or, which is what I thought the answer to the question would be, I just wanted to be said, right, as rule of record.
Um.
Doctor Coyle, first, I just wanted to mention, I I um had a chance to speak some to some select board members from another town that had um completed a similar assessment. Um and and they spoke very highly of it, so the the reputation of these uh seems to be high from that one data point anyway. Um, one question I have. Does the assessment consider the financial abilities of the town to actually implement the recommendations?
Uh the, it doesn't, so we don't get into like a cost analysis of the recommendations, so there's not that level of detail. But I but I will say that the recommendations are for do, they they come out of the results of the assessment. And and they also take into account the context of things like the other plans that are going on and sort of all of the other priorities within the town of Maynard. And so it's always my hope that the the recommendations are within um an appropriate scale to what's happening um in Maynard. And the other thing I'll I'll say about the recommendations is that they are just that, they are recommendations, they are not um, it's not a to do list. It's not, you you know, must do all of these things, it's sort of laying out these, this is what we heard from your community, and these are some ways to address those needs. Um so I would also just say that they are um, you know, things to get the conversation going and and ideas to start, but are certainly not prescriptive in that way.
Thank you.
And then we heard Representative Pogan, beginning of tonight's meeting, talk about her willingness to help. So our state delegation certainly should be encouraged or asked for some uh some involvement and assistance. Uh because I'm sure there must be some some type of uh.
Yeah, and you heard my earlier comment, we have figured out quite how, but there will be advocacy and fundraising, for lack of a better.
Yep.
I will share with you in some of our conversations, we literally brought up bake sale.
Jack, Jack, no, I'm not interested, but is the, what is the um? What, how, how long and how good is this um pricing from the mill for? For what period of time does this pricing be in our town?
Otherwise, how long is your quote valid?
Yeah.
It's been in place for literally months now.
I guess, I guess I have another question too, um for Dr. Coyle. You have the, you know, the last slide that you showed, which is the the timeline?
Hmm.
Hmm. So where where are we on that timeline, or we haven't begun to get on that timeline yet?
We're not, we have not gotten to that timeline at this.
We're not, so we're officially not at step one.
No.
The one, we did step one, and we set the the twelve month, the central twelve month block, the one.
Yeah.
And the the follow up question is, is that fast enough for what anybody needs?
I think, I mean, you're not.
It's a question in general, it's kind of a rhetorical question, it is, if we're, if we're not, if we're not a step one in the process, but we haven't, we haven't started the race yet. Is it, is it, is that timeline, right, for for you all, for the senior community? Is that timeline, because once you, once we receive the report at the end of the fall month, then we have how many more of these meetings to get to? We're looking at two year process.
Yeah.
And and so that just, based on, based on the comments, right, in the conversations, that's not good enough for us. Like, we don't have, you don't have two years. If if you can't fit, if you can't have a class with twelve people, we we don't have two years to wait to get twelve people in class. Do you know what I'm saying, and I'm not, I I. Great idea, now I'm all for it, I'm just saying, we're not at step one, so when we get to the end of step, step, you know, the final assessment to be in the present presentation of findings. That we're we're complete with Dr. Coyle and UMass Boston, and now we're, now we have something in front of us, and we have to start another clock ticking. I'm just, I'm just concerned more that, you know, when is that too long to have a clock ticking?
Well, I I think one of the responsibilities on us, when you select forward, is to know that this is in the pipeline. To be prepared for it to be in the pipeline, to work with Greg to begin the budgeting and thought process of the budgeting sooner rather than later. So that we're not stuck in a, in a year and a half when the report comes through, or in a year when the report comes through, saying, great, we got the report, we're not prepared. And this is what planning is all about, but then we have to stay with the plan, if we have a plan, and not divert from it. And that that becomes difficult when we get pulled from other large departments in town. Um that are looking for things and. So but we have to, if we have to have a plan, and that's consistent with a lot of the stuff that we do, and where we seem to trip is. We don't stick with the plan, and that's critical of myself, that's critical of prior boards, that's critical of. A lot has gone on, because we have different priorities that come up that require us to move away from a plan. And I've been trying to say for a long time, stick with the plan, stick with the plan. And we we fumbled too much, and so we have to make a plan, we have to stick with it, I'll say it again.
I think there's a little confusion in the room in that we are advocating for basically three things at once. Uh an immediate move to a larger interim space as soon as we can do that. And that would require an RFP and dealing with the mill and seeing what kind of creative financing we might come up with to get us there sooner or later. And let us grow the program to where it needs to be. Second is to have Caitlin Coyle and her group come in next January, do a nine month study. And give us the information we need to say, all right, down the road, we need a permanent. Facility could be for a community center, including teens and adults, gymnasium. Senior center within that, uh we don't know yet, but she could help us focus on that. But for now, our needs are to get into a space, and frankly, the spaces are disappearing as soon as we find them. Because we wait and we talk and think, and it's time that we act now. I understand that you have other priorities and other departments. And but it seems that the seniors always go to the end of the list and never make it up past the first or second step. And that has to stop. We we need to move ahead on these projects.
I will point out the um RFP part of it, um and and and. The RFP, you know, I believe if you put out an RFP, you wouldn't necessarily get Millimane, might. But you might get something else, so so that's the other part, I know that, I know that that's, but you know, when I first saw that the tours and everything else, that was my main concern is that. You know, A, we. I don't see where the money is in the budget at the moment, so I I will say that a hundred percent.
For for the first space.
For that, for the space, for the, for the space. Um but at the same, at the same time also, um, you know, it is going to be a comprehensive process of putting together an RFP. And then finding out what spaces are available at that point, because right now, we don't, you know, we can't say that that Millimane would win that that bid proposal. Um they might, but we don't know.
But once again, isn't one of the objectives of the assessment to help us figure out what kind of space and size of space and programming needs we have? And help narrow that down, is that not one of the outcomes? Hmm.
About needs now and needs future, and as those numbers grow, as the senior population grow, grows. That's where we're looking down the road and saying, we may need a much larger facility.
But what I, what I don't think we want to do is move the senior center and then discover we need to move it again as a result of an assessment.
Here we have the temporary solution and you have a permanent. We're talking about a temporary solution, that moves us into a permanent solution down the road.
And that can buy us five years, ten years, while the town regroups and says, all right, schools are set. The sewer and water infrastructure is set, fire department, police department, everybody is all set. Now it's the community center, the senior center, and we're ready to roll.
Oh.
Go ahead, Jack. To go back to Chris's observation, the the need is now. And that gets us into what Justine and others have said, if you look at the town's twenty three budget, we're pretty much near the end, the twenty four budget. Won't be approved until town meeting, but the funding decisions and the the groups that are going to get that are in fact already in place. So it becomes, what is the opportunity? Because budgets change, there might be a development agreement, might be whatever additional sources of funding. And it's sort of casual comment, why we got full town meetings and we move budgets around. But even that is fairly far out, while the needs continue to grow. Uh at a fundamental level, through the activities of the council and aging board, in particular the director, there's a rough approximation of, this is what we need. It's how we came to, when the focus group began to look at spaces, sort of five thousand square feet was the minimum. Uh we could probably justify ten thousand or something like that, but the five thousand square foot, sort of, we could do it with existing resources plus additional instructors. So begins to give you a size. And and yes, we're caught in this dichotomy, or ideally, we would have, that's where the aging assessment comes in. Let's get an independent assessment of what our population growth is, what they're really interested in, what they would participate in, so forth and so on. But we're on this, what can we do now versus what can we do later? Back to Chris's point for a second, the UMass Institute has slots, that they can do that, one in another, they can't do an infinite number. We tried to get into the fall one of this year, that passed by, so part of the conversation we do today is, can we muster enough? Direction and so forth to say, yes, we will commit to the January twenty twenty four, the spring twenty twenty four, because otherwise, that goes away as well. So that's part of the, can we come up with the money to do that while we also try to address budget shifts and priorities and space? And Justine, to your comment for a second, I'm sitting here, you know, could we benefit ourselves by just doing an RFP? And the Millimane thing is there, but it might not be Millimane. I'm not sure where else in this town you'd get a response, in terms of what organizations would even respond to an RFP, it's sort of. I mean, the Beijing School maybe, but they're kind of dead in the water for a moment, so we could, it's.
You can design an RFP to get where we need to get.
We would just, we would just need to be able to have the money to do the RFP also, because we can't put out an RFP if we don't have the money to fund the actual contract rate.
In addition to uh Amy's comment about the side of the face being short, you have to remember too, we're not even supposed to be there. Yes, C and C funds are not permissible, that's not a use of permissible, so. Other than these, we dealt with sooner rather than later, in eight years.
Um, is it, we go ahead.
Hi, um Judy Burgess, North Street, miracles happen at COA, it's wonderful, and I can't imagine. What they achieve when, with the shortage of personnel, not even, but mostly two, I want to say. It's amazing you don't have a lawsuit, trying to get in there, up that hill, at our age, for people that have pains, whatever, unless they come by the van. That's a sweet hill, sometimes icy and wet, I know they they salt it. Right here is ridiculous, I've been to other COAs, they're flat, you walk in, you're not going up the hill to get in the door, or several steps. I think it's urgent.
Did the COA put in a request for an expanded space during the budget cycle? Do you? So, you know.
Come on, I don't want the capital planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's moved away now, if you look at the last report, not even on the radar.
Correct.
That's a.
Yeah.
Record of the capital.
Okay, um. Very good, um. Okay, other questions? Okay, I think. I think this will come up when we talk about the budget shortly. Um, and so I'll invite any other comment at this time, and I think we'll be revisiting in a few engine items.
And as we always say, thank you to those of you who are working on the uh on the effort. Thank you, Doctor, for your presentation, Jack, thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Coyle, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, um when and how did you become aware of these assessments? Um.
This is on here.
Well, just in the Sunday Globe, I think in August or September, detailing the, this program um in their study of the town hall. And we looked into it and said, oh, in the town of Weston, in the town of Bedford, in Littleton, and it it started to. Come to our attention that this group has been extremely helpful to guide towns. I mean, we're all volunteers, we do the best we can, but they have the expertise in this field and uh would be help, very helpful.
Okay.
Why did someone become qualified to be considered a member of the COA or?
I think you're.
Programs.
So based on Jack's presentation, I am, but I'm.
Senior something.
Taste the music.
As you said, you know what, I just want to note, I shouldn't, you see, and said, holy hell, I just realized sitting here, obviously, it's a noise.
Yeah.
But anyway. I do, but I, but yeah, I I I see what.
You may. You may.
No, when would it sound, we didn't need our COA to be able to commit to Caitlin.
That normal funding processes are submitted in the fall, so if we were following the procedure, it would be submitted in the fall and go through the evaluation. Um, for the capital planning committee. So if we take you this year, it would be out of order.
You, you, we're talking, she's talking about.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would argue that normal process would be to submit that in the fall and then the capital planning committee would consider it in there.
All right, I, I then want to play devil's advocate and say, as a town, would you endorse? And commit us to this program, knowing that if you can't come up with the entire. Funding that we would find, would find the money somewhere, somehow.
I thought it's probably going to be too late, we're going to miss.
We could get into another slot, couldn't we, in the future slot?
And they'll have another town in line.
So, so you're looking at me, but I don't speak. I, 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 I respect the. Uh, and so my understanding is Dr. Coyle, unless, unless she leaving or this program is speeding in the next year. It is likely that the program will be continuing in FY twenty-five, which is what, what we're kind of talking about.
The, the direct answer is, if they're, whatever their deadline is, they're going to slip out. What is, you know, you have six months, the fall semester, the spring semester, if we kind of delay it, we lose that slot, so.
Okay, right.
So would the select board be willing to endorse our involvement in the program?
With, without funding lined up?
Without funding lined up?
I. I don't know what that implies. I, I think it's a good idea. I think if I had thirty-five thousand dollars, I would do it immediately. Um, that's my personal opinion, um, but I think we need to figure out that funding. If, if the funding was there, I would endorse the program, but I want to make sure that we can afford it and pay for it. Did that answer your question?
For saying, for asking for your endorsement and we're going to figure out the funding. Along with you, we're going to figure out the funding sources.
Yes, I.
Yeah, the, the concern is that the town, so the town would sign the contract, I believe, because it's, so it's not something that you. It's not something, I, I mean, I don't know, but it wouldn't be engaged in a personal, like. Like, I don't know, is it, if you could sign a contract with them committing to thirty-five thousand dollars. So if the town signs a contract, maybe for thirty-five thousand dollars, then ultimately, even if. You know, through all, through all of your hard work, if you come up short, it's still going to fall on the town to pay for. Right? Okay, all right, I just wanted to share.
But we, we can't find anything with, we want to get that thing there. So if you're, yeah, if you're simply asking me if I think, and again, as an individual member, this is a good idea, the assessment, absolutely. Um, but we legally can't sign a contract until the funding is already secured.
And yet you're talking about paying it all at once and we're saying, why not sign a contract and give them two thousand dollars? And then the second.
The contract would, their contract would bind us thirty-five thousand dollars per se.
Within two or three years.
Perhaps, but Greg and Ford at this point does not have a specific funding source to which we can say, yes, we commit to that. I echo Jess's comments, yeah, if, if Greg had said tonight that, uh, yeah, I can find thirty-five, which, you know, I wish. Could, I found thirty-five thousand dollars in, you know, whatever.
Where's your free cash from?
Where does? Multiple sources, I think this is, I, again, I recommend that the people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I believe the board could probably, if you wish, endorse the concept, a commitment of money and so forth, and there could be whatever conversations with.
Did you have more?
Yeah, I think that's probably, I mean, I, I don't know if we can even go down that, recommend that.
Uh, so I, I would interpret an endorsement as direction for me to find money. Frankly, that's usually how I roll, so if you want to do that, you can, I was telling you.
Yeah, you would have to find the money this, this fiscal year.
I don't know if that's what you're being asked.
It would not be, it would not be for this fiscal year.
Right, so I, I want to save the financial part of the conversation for when we get to the financial item on the agenda. Cause I want to consider that in the full context of all the financial needs of the town, so that's, that's where I'm at on that. And again, if you're asking me if this looks like a good idea and saying we should pursue. In my opinion, as an individual member of the board, and I'm seeing nods around me, yes, absolutely, we should try to find the funding. How quickly we can do that, I think that's what I want to discuss in the next, in the next agenda item. So I, I, I really do want to find this funding for you, I, but there's, it's a very complicated budget and it's a particularly. Uh, I'll say contentious year, uh, and, and I know every year can get contentious, but I, I do. Well, and I do think that this one in my relatively short tenure on the board, this is, is that, is this year, so. Um, but we, we will discuss this and I, yeah. But I think the danger is good, what I've seen from other communities looks great, and I think this would be, uh, very helpful to the town of Maynard. Thank you, thank you all, and I know you've all put a lot of time in this, so thank you. All right. Um.
People are leaving, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, please. Okay, very good, so council on aging is now adjourned. At eight fifty-one, very good, all right. Um. Next up, we have a, uh, presentation for, uh, utility fee rates for water and sewer for FY twenty-four. Um, the public hearing at which the decision will be made is scheduled for our next select board meeting. And so we are reviewing all the data now in advance so that we have time to consider it in advance of the public hearing. Good evening.
Hello. Um, Justin DeMarco, Public Works Director.
Yeah, welcome back, thank you.
Very good to see you, I haven't seen you in that position. Uh, your spirit, I wish, that was fantastic, you come back, you're very busy. That's all we're good, right? Yeah, gets you right up, right second. Um, tonight, I am joined by our financial consultant, Deb. I think she is out there somewhere in Doomville, can you wave, Deb? So Deb joined us from Stantech, um, the reason that you don't see somebody that typically joins me, um, for years. It's on Maynard, has procured the services of Douglas Gardner and Tiny Consultants. To help us with our installing financial models and forecast, et cetera, and unfortunately, Deb was half the way.
Oh, my goodness.
So it came with great sadness and is actually some of the delayed process and why would I think of this time? And yet there was, it actually came as a huge chunk, we learned it one day before department meeting. And, uh, yeah, so, but that has set us up for a long-term in goals and our financial models. Were able to be adapted and Deb and her team are excellent at what they do. They service a large portion of the country when it comes to this kind of financial structure. And I am proud to have, I do not know, we'll be able to let Deb have sharing access.
Not letting me at the moment.
So, I did want to ask you that, I will run the PowerPoint, I'm going to have Deb present the PowerPoint presentation. Um, I know the board has most likely seen my memo and my recommendation as the W Director. Um, Deb, we are going to run the PowerPoint presentation as presented.
Okay, well, familiar. Hi, everyone, um, pleasure to be here, although, um, you know, it was a transition, as Dustin mentioned. Um, so I'll go ahead and introduce myself and introduce Stantech. Um, you actually are probably familiar with Stantech given their work with the town. Um, but there is a group within the company that I belong to that provides rate setting and financial services. And so if you wouldn't mind switching to the next slide, it just shows us, Justin mentioned, a map of where we operate. We have hubs in the northeast as well as the southeast in Florida, um, the Colorado area, California area. Um, so what that means for you is that, you know, I come from a team of about thirty-five. And we bring expertise from across, across the country. Um, and so some of the trends that we'll discuss today in terms of inflation and, and capital costs are trends that, that we're very familiar with and we see. Um, and, uh, we'll provide to you a number of different options in terms of what your rate structure could look like for twenty twenty-four. Um, in order to, to generate the amount of revenue that you need for capital and for future planning. Um, we'll give you a couple of, of different options, and then as Dustin mentioned, you know, he provided you with his recommendation. Um, so next slide, thank you. So the twenty twenty-four, or our analysis relies heavily on the twenty twenty-four budget, which has been discussed a number of times tonight. Um, for water and sewer services across the entire country and across the entire industry. Um, there's been heavy inflation on those costs, especially in areas like materials and labor, which affects the. Uh, water and sewer funds specifically. More specific to the town, your water debt is rolling off by about three hundred. Thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. So for this analysis, we are including new borrowing, um, for ongoing projects. We're assuming that will be three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four, the first year of borrowing, but increasing to over five hundred thousand dollars each year thereafter. So it's sort of filling that gap and then going forward, that amount will increase. Another change is that in twenty twenty-three, the allocation of indirect costs, which was previously forty percent water and sixty percent sewer. Is now shifted sixty percent water, forty percent sewer, so, um, some of the inflationary and capital trends. Are putting pressure on both funds, but you'll see there's a little bit more of a higher need for increases on the water side. Because of this shift of costs from essentially from sewer to water. Um, two options that we will present today on the water side are the levels of revenue increases needed. Um, so the first option being a seven percent water revenue increase accompanied by a four percent sewer revenue increase. The second option for your consideration is an additional fifty thousand dollars in revenue generated. Um, which would be an additional two percent, so total nine percent water revenue increase. Same increase on the sewer side, um, that one isn't experiencing as much pressure as I mentioned. Um, but this additional two percent would allow you to set aside some funds to begin preparing for future capital projects instead of setting aside some of those dollars. The next slide shows some of the trends visually, so looking at one year of history, fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The current year that you're in, fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And then what you can see as you track this over the next couple of years is again, that, um, increase in the operating costs. Shown in orange, we've assumed from twenty twenty-five forward that we would continue to see an increase in operating costs, but more around the three percent level. The green bar is particularly important because that's where in twenty twenty-four, the debt service rolls off. But then now we're assuming that that new debt service payment will begin and will increase again in twenty twenty-five. Um, the blue bars, that's where from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, you see a, a pretty big increase here on the water side. And then, um, the amount at the top is the amount that's set aside for capital. And that purple is really just the difference between the two scenarios, that additional fifty thousand dollars that you could set aside. If you were to generate an additional two percent in revenue increases. Now, when I say, um, you know, seven percent or nine percent, we'll look at a couple of different scenarios of how you could collect that revenue. Um, you know, it could be that we collect revenue, um, more from the minimum charge and less from the first two steps. So just know that there's a couple of different ways that we'll look at that, and then going forward with the current trend, we're expecting seven percent. Revenue increases are needed in twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven, um, but of course, there will be a number of different, um. Opportunities for us to, to come before you before that. Okay, sewer, this looks very similar, um, however, simpler in terms of the dynamics. So again, the operating costs increasing going forward, um, the big one here being the indirect costs. That blue bar drops in twenty twenty-three, uh, you know, easing a little bit of the pressure that we're seeing from the operating cost side. However, on the capital side, there are significant capital improvements, um, that you're included in your twenty twenty-four and ongoing budget. After twenty twenty-four, once you sort of get over that hump of increasing those inflationary costs. The, what we're seeing for the forward-looking years is that that levels off a little bit, we're seeing that two percent annual revenue increases would be needed. All right, so now moving into some of the different rates and rate structure scenarios. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning, we're looking at two different scenarios of revenue collected on the water side. So a seven percent scenario and a nine percent scenario. There's two scenarios within those scenarios, um, one where you just apply seven percent increases across the board to the minimum charge. And to all of the tiers, and then another, um, which is the recommendation. Where you continue to increase the revenue that's collected from the minimum charge on the water side, so increasing from thirty dollars to thirty-five dollars. But then offsetting some of those impacts to the lower users using a, a progressive increase to the tiers. So a lower increase to the lower, you know, first and second step, and then a higher increase to the third and fourth step. Um, so that, those alternatives apply to both the seven percent and the nine percent. And we'll look at what that looks like in terms of the actual rates and in terms of what the customer impacts are. Again, on sewer, um, we are just putting forth one recommendation. No increase to the minimum, the current minimum is fifty dollars, so again, trying to close the gap a little bit between water and sewer. And then recovering the four percent increase in revenue from the second and third step. Um, a slight progressive increase to the, to the second and third step. So hopefully, that'll make a little bit more sense here as we look at these schedules, which should be familiar to you. What's shown here is our first scenario, so this is where, um, water total revenues increased by seven percent. But again, there's a couple of different ways to, you know, skim the cat, so to speak, you can recover seven percent more revenue. Through increasing your minimum charge, increasing your volumetric rate. So this scenario contemplates increasing the minimum charge by five dollars, which is a sixteen percent increase. But then has just a two percent increase to the first and second step, a five percent increase to the third step. And a seven percent increase to the fourth step. All told, you increase total revenues by seven percent. Um, but in doing.
Can you give me a second? We want to see if we can clear around this background noise. If, if you're not on mute, if you could please go on mute. I think we've got it, please, please continue, thank you.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, so I'll back up just a step, this is the scenario where you're increasing total revenues by seven percent. But you're increasing your minimum charge by five dollars, which is about a sixteen or seventeen percent increase. And then in order to offset the total increase in bills to those lower volume users, we're. Uh, putting forth a progressive increase to those tiers, so a lower percentage, a two percent increase to the first step. And the second step, and then a five percent increase to the third step and a seven percent increase to the fourth step. If you look at that dollar increase column, you know, all of those dollar increases are, are under one dollar per. Uh, CCF per hundred cubic feet, so, you know, we don't want to get in a position where it becomes astronomically expensive. To, uh, have an increment of water volume in that fourth step and people stop using that, that quantity of water altogether. And that becomes an impact on your revenues, so we, we just tried to tip the scale a little bit to help out some of those lower volume users. Given that we are increasing the minimum charge five dollars under this specific scenario. The next slide will show the sewer recommendation, and then I'll talk about what it looks like when we click it together. And what that ultimate customer bill impact would be. So this scenario, as I mentioned, it. Uh, the recommendation is to increase revenues by four percent total. But how we would go about that is no change to the minimum charge, the minimum charge is fifty dollars. And again, we're trying to close the gap a little bit between water and sewer, um, and then just a slightly progressive increase on the, the tiered rate. The volumetric rate, so the first step would be four percent, the second step would be five percent, and the third step would be six percent. Now, slide, then following slide shows for a custom. Now slide, then following slide shows for a customer with. You know, as you go down in the rows with that level of volume, what would be the difference in their bill from the current rate to the two thousand and twenty-four rate? So, you know, as user with zero usage would see a five dollar change just from the minimum changing, that's six percent. And then as you look across down this list, um, even your low user, your average user, the the percentage change stays pretty constant in the four to six percent range. Um, so again, we're increasing our our level of fixed cost recovery, which is a great thing, especially as you're contemplating borrowing going forward. Um, but you're offsetting that with the progressive tier increases. And so that allows you to to have equity across all of the different levels of usage. Now, again, that's the seven percent scenario. Um, this is another seven percent scenario, but under this scenario, we just say seven percent increase to the minimum charge to all of the steps. Um, you know, across the board. And what that looks like on the next slide, when combined with that sewer recommendation, is you see a lower increase to the lower volume users and a higher increase to the higher volume users. But again, one of the one of the primary differences there being that you're not increasing the level of revenue that is recovered from fixed charges, which is another, um, you know, tends to be an objective. Okay, so that was two scenarios. Now we'll go through two more and they're essentially the same structure, except just a little bit higher revenue recovered from each of them. So again, this is the nine percent scenario. We kept that five dollar increase here and then just the increases to the volumetric rates. All of those steps are a little bit higher, they're one or two percent higher than under the other scenario where we were talking about seven percent total increase in revenue. So then on the next slide, what that looks like again is pretty level increases across the board. So that low user would have, you know, five and a half percent about, average user would have a little over that. So the range here is maybe five to seven percent increase. And again, this scenario allows you to collect an additional fifty thousand dollars to start setting aside reserves for capital. Okay, one more scenario, hopefully following along so far. This again is a nine percent increase, um, in revenue and we're applying that nine percent across all of the rates. And what you would see here is that because of the way that we're structuring the sewer side, really, with no increase to the to the minimum charge. Those lower volume users on slide fifteen would have less of a percentage change. And the higher volume users would have higher percentage change. Um, again, in total, a nine percent increase in revenue on the water side and a four percent increase in revenue on the sewer side. In summary, uh, there is higher pressure on the water fund due to the indirect cost allocation. Both funds are experiencing increases in operating costs and the need for investing in capital. That Old Marlboro Road project looms and as much as possible, um, to look forward and begin setting aside funds is recommended. And then there are a couple of different options that we looked at for collecting revenues, a couple of different levels of revenues that. Um, that we should look to achieve, a couple of different scenarios that we put forth. And Justin, I'm sure would be happy to speak more to why he selected that one scenario specifically. And I'm also here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, um, I'm sorry, which scenario were you going to recommend?
So the first presented one exhibit one and one.
And just so I'm clear here, ten slides, ten and eleven, is that, those are supposed to be one B, correct?
I apologize, yep.
That's fine, I I figured it out.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure we're clear, all right, very good.
Yep.
Questions?
Yeah, quickly, um. I have the two of the scenarios presented, I certainly think one A makes the most sense, but I've got a question. In years past, um, there was comment made that one of the reasons why we're consistent with the percentages. We're out of out of town billing, because I believe that we should pump it up on the out of town rates. Um, you know, why increase everybody if we have out of town users that pay, they're we're giving them the benefit? Um, is there a reason why in the years past, to get to my point, we were told that, oh, it's too much, um, accounting work? The, uh.
No, so so I don't know who gave you that information.
Because the billing would be difficult because you'd have different bills going out and everything else.
No, we we have a very, very small outside of town customer base and capturing the revenue is very nominal. Um, we have in the past four years identified moving those rates up. We have actually as a board and and the DPW has recommended that. And I believe in the scenario, we will see that we are capturing the revenue as well, but it's very nominal. We do not have a large customer base. We're talking about twenty to thirty customers of, um, one three hundred. So there's not a huge grab there. You know, the long-term potential gain is if we ever, you know, were able to capture, um, a large amount of capacity expansion into. And out of town to capture revenues in the future would be a consideration. But right now, we don't have the capacity to expand and the nominal impact of revenues produced from outside sources is very, very low. But we do, um, consistently have a much higher rate for the town users than we do in town.
I see that, it's just that the percentage of increase is equal to the percentage of increase. Okay.
Justin, do you have, I'm totally on the spot here.
Um. The worst.
Do you happen to know approximately, possibly, how many customers fall in the first year of the zero to five hundred?
So our average user is actually in the two thousand cubic foot range.
Okay.
Um, and it is significant, um, within that third tier of users within the town administrator. Um, I would tell you, our second highest user is within that five hundred thousand cubic feet situation. So they kind of bridge that, the one tier two situation. We have, I just want to remind the board that we were highly focused on a long-term plan to close the gap in the minimal charge for water. As you heard Deb discuss, um, fixed costs, revenues allow for, um, solidification when we're looking for long-term debt and things of that nature. And as you know, in our long-term water capacity improvement, um, plan, we have significant long-term debt continuing to come on the horizon. Now, you know, into the board's consideration, we were doing the minimum charters in a faith and approach. And not trying to capture all day ones, not going from twenty-five to fifty, imagining sewer. This is consistent with that, with that growth pattern. Uh, I will tell you the same thing is, uh, part of our long-term plans, we saw the debt fall off. We're trying to capture it so that we're not trying to piggyback that. So we're trying to capture that fall off, so that while four, you're seeing start to capture that three hundred. Next year, we have an anticipation of about another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand that we're going to capture. Um, within our borrowing capacity, there's not necessarily the implication that we're going to utilize all of that borrowing capacity for well four A, which those numbers will start to tweak next fiscal year as well. But to to the slide impacts and the FY twenty-four impacts is we're actually just capturing the fall off, so we're not taking the debt costs. This is a lot of pressure from inflationary costs in materials. So chemicals to sustain our water quality, fuel, things of that nature. Um, our significant impacts on our systems, electricity costs, propane costs, all of those things are driving factors here.
Chris, do you have a question?
Well.
Who has, um, can you give me an example? If you don't have one on the top, you had private fire protection with actual hydrants.
Oh, so most of our condo associations.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I will tell you, that was a funding source that we did not capture a little four years ago. And it is known uncommon, uh, within these utilities to have that. We actually have a significant amount of, um, of that, uh, infrastructure within the town administration. We have large scale, like summer health and that nature that have that process in place.
Yeah, I don't remember soon, I'm obviously for the last three years been on there. I don't remember historically being on there and that's why.
Correct, it was, it was a, it was a situation that wasn't captured and we really focused hard. If you remember last year, we looked at our, uh, labor costs for our services provided on that. We looked at a number of, um, opportunities, our our backflow situation. There was a lot of non-use services, we were providing at a very, very low cost that we need to, we needed to adjust the industry, which is our pattern right now. So that's able to help reduce some of the impact on user rate increase as a whole. Um, and it does, you know, allocate that to the specific need.
I assume all of these scenarios allow us to meet the, uh, obligations is the right word to the DEP to keep us, uh, you know, above the board, so to speak.
Yeah, so Jeff, we've been making, um, great strides with our operation increases and our employment staff increases. Um, the EP has been satisfied, we still have goals to meet, but they also know that there's strength. They're well aware of all the late in economic market and how it's going to affect locales and specifically policy changes, unemployment, even the nature. So we've been dealing with the EP as we always do on a significant amount of factors and they have really subsided their push when it comes to that. That doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to build that into future forecasts. We're, um, about two full-time employees away from where we were requested to be two, three years ago. Um, but we've made significant strides, our staff is well-educated, well-trained, we have a, um, auto experience. And he has been highly satisfied with the processes in which we're, which our day-to-day operation is moving towards. I will say that the two scenarios, um, the reason that I'm not making the recommendation of the nine percent is I also do a, what may is going to financially, you guys and the board. Well, we're involved in a lot of your conversations, well, outside of just water and sewer. Um, it gives me great sadness to say that we're going to potentially kick the can one year on Old Marlboro Road. But that came because Kate Hogan has made large indications that she has secured a funding, having permanent. Which, when we were talking about financial modeling for the future, we were hedging ourselves against the greater debt. But at the same time, utilizing that fund to move the process forward. So Kate, this is a great example of Kate being able to reduce potentially two percent on the local rate, um, with securing those funds. And we'll be happy to move that process forward. Moving past, we will revisit it again in FY twenty-five. At that time, we'll know the actual cost of for a completion. And then we'll know the actual debt interest payments on that and we'll be able to adjust that to the first model. Uh, and at that point, we can identify, uh, where we move with our long-term capacity plan and how we get, you know, as you saw, the financial forecasting, nice progressive movement. Now, I will say it's very hard to predict three, four years out. Um, even the sewer, I would actually tell you that water is a little more predictable with that seven percent model. Sewer went from four to two percent, but just know that our service contract with Violia is up after we have one more year's cycle. So there's the potential that that could be a huge driver in changing the two percent model. We've been lucky to have that contract for almost seventy years, which is one big beat from about seven years ago. Um, and that is the biggest service contract the town administrator has. Harder than, you know, harder than any other contract. So I'm assuming that is going to impact the sewer rates, um, in the upcoming year. But we have hedged against that, meaning we haven't moved forward with zero, one percent. We have been moving in two, three, four percent fashion over sewer that will come back, giving ourselves a little bit.
It's good to hear about the DEP being flexible and aware of current economic conditions.
Yes, um, a lot of that, I think, too, Jeff, is starting to come from, you're seeing operate being dedicated to water and sewer that needs state local and we're receiving.
Yep.
So so isn't the higher rate. So the recent act is also dedicated for water and sewer. So I think, um, DEP is starting to fulfill their buckets. So their programs have a little bit more financial backing. Um, I will leave in front of you, I don't know if the controls are on tonight or tomorrow night. Or I mean, excuse me, our next, uh, next like board, but there's a control, the potential of lead service inventory. And I just recently learned that the UK has changed from their traditional, uh, uh, reserve trust borrowing program, which is. An easy program to do because if the ball, when they feedback to a traditional, so they're starting to actually listen to some of the utilities and our constraints are moving across forward. So there's some good indication.
Any other questions? I mean, the question is just two comments, uh, this might be for SanTech, but I do like the presentation of information on slides four and five. That graphical build out with just a couple of high-level bullet points makes it very quickly digestible. Um, or maybe I've been staring at these for three years and there's you to interpret and then round one. Um, but the other reason I don't have more questions, I do see some of the comments I made two or three years ago being factored in about where the rate increases are high in love. So I do appreciate that and I just wanted you to know I noticed that and thank you.
So part of, I will tell you, Deb has been fantastic and part of the transition was, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel in re- in regards to how the information is presented and adjusted. And Deb did a great job taking a lot of Doug's work and applying it. And I will tell you that I did not ask Deb to put black and orange, she just happened to. And it is the major colors, which is also, so it was just.
Happy coincidence.
That's supposed to be a secret.
No, no, I think it was great because I told her, I said, oh, you're going to really win the, I'd say, by.
Anything else on water and sewer enterprise? Well, then we will see you in two weeks for the hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, item ten is, uh, good old friends, Coolidge School. So this is a different extension now, but it's great or an extension for a different reason. Greg, would you like to set this up?
We covered this a little bit last time. Um, so yes, they, the historical preservation is now inside. But the regulatory agreement, which dictates the 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 terms of, um, informal housing aspect of property, not yet. It's, so I, I think I said the last, or whatever, I said at a, as like for me about this topic that I'm reluctant in general to work around, as I call them. Um, but, um, there is a feasible workaround in regards to the regulatory agreement and cooperation with the HCD. This is the Department of Housing, we developed it, it kind of regulates these, uh, these terms. And, um, so Town Council is communicating with the HCD as well as RHSO, which is the Regional Housing Service Office. They're like our, there are our agents when it comes to implementation of of formal housing in the community as well as, um, Civico. And, oh, and Rick Claxton on the, uh, for housing trust, to make sure everyone's on the same page about how we can sort of skin that cap. And, um, so we're moving on, but Town Council still recommends, um, bump it out to another three months. Um, so that's June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, that's the second meeting in June for this stuff.
And you know the question I have to ask is, is there a chance we want to extend again once we get to June twentieth?
Of course, there's a chance, but, um, I I am heartened, uh, by this regulatory agreement. They, again, it's not ideal, just because you don't want it necessarily go into closing with things. You know, it'll be, there'll be contingencies that my suspicion is. Um, you know, in in the the terms of the closing will require, you know, perhaps, um, perhaps certification in formal housing unit would have to be in hand before the voting inspector signs off on the certificate of occupancy, right? There's a, there's a leverage that we sometimes do for these, you know, to make sure that that those conditions are met. So I I don't know if that's going to be the case here, I'm just saying that as it happens. But, um, and that's okay, and we and we make those reveals with all the developers. Um, generally, it's just not as clean as when it's all, you just say, well, it's all that.
I have one question. Could they have been applying for this this whole time?
Good.
Or did they have to wait until they got?
I can't speak for, and I, Taylor Bearden, who's been on, he actually actually asked me if he should come up tonight, and I said, no. Now I read that, um, I can't speak, I can't speak. Yes.
All right, again, lessons learned.
Yeah.
I mean, but that would seem like it would hurt SIFCO as well, that's, it wouldn't have been in their interest for that drop, but.
Yeah, that's, I would say that's true. You're correct, like selfishly, we are, we are, we still have the property, we are still, you know, paying for the insurance on it, et cetera. We are not making revenue on support and, uh, I'm gaining affordable housing units on it, there's so many downsides, it's true. But you're right, it's, it doesn't move Civico and that.
Any questions on this? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the extension of the deadline to June twentieth, twenty twenty-three for the closing and deconvent for twelve Bank Road Street. To conceal, concealing real estate buildings LLC, DBA Civic Development. And authorize the town administrator to execute the extension on our behalf.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Moving on to item eleven, this is, uh, the renewal of the contract for, uh, our animal control officer and I believe. And I believe it is largely the same with a few differences, Greg.
But that's, that is true. So um. For being animal control has been the town's um. Service provider for animal control, great. Um, Jen Condon is a resident incidentally and, and she's been doing good work for us. So uh, this is a two and a half percent increase to the rate um. Or let me bring it up for. Okay, so it's a two and a half increase to the rate. Um, but it's going to be pro rated for this because we were just start January twenty first. That's the, the January first, that's when it actually starts. But there's a slight difference. There's actually two services. It's the animal control officer as well as the inspector of animals. They have slightly different scopes um and, and board animal control has been doing both services for the town for years now. Jen Condon let me know that her, her company has been picking up um. What's the correct term? Uh, dead animals.
The official term.
That's. Doesn't matter, but, but you know, they've been thinking it up and um, and it hasn't been actually as part of their scope, um, but they've been doing it. So she has. Paid for that. And so that this, the effective animals portion uh reflects that.
Why do we pay for that?
Um, it's for each, it's like a thousand, it's, it's the difference between, because originally the proposal was the same twelve thousand ninety and twelve thousand ninety for the two. If you're looking at the contract.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's whatever thirteen eight ninety minus twelve thousand ninety, I don't know. It's, it's.
For the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And questions? So sorry, um, probably that I can't find it fast enough, but do you know if she has a great, well, I guess it doesn't matter. Um, it's included like.
What's your question?
I was, I was wondering what, how, what, what size dead animals did she pick up like, but I, I, it doesn't matter. It was one, it doesn't matter because it's just a set price. That's why, that's what I was doing.
Okay.
It's not like a per animal cost. That's what I was trying to.
Don't count them.
Sorry.
So in fact, she had one that extended beyond five of her vehicle. I do remember her saying that was difficult.
Well, 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 yes, thank you.
A deer probably. But, but I know, I know other towns get called for like squirrels and, and they don't pick them up because.
Yeah.
Cause nature takes its course. Exactly. But I was curious, you know, if it's a per animal thing, fifty of squirrels, that would be something, but never mind.
They are.
Any, any questions on the uh, on this contract?
I'll move to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign the animal control contract between town of Maynard and Jennifer Condon, Boardman's Animal Control Incorporated. From January first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five as presented.
Second, all in favor? Thank you. All right, we have two uh draft control articles to discuss in advance of town meeting. And the first one is the disposition of the old fire station at one summer street.
Okay. So um. Yeah, we're, we're looking forward to, you know, it's been a doctor of work for, for months now, but we were looking forward to sell our station. So this, this language, I believe, came from the town council, although admittedly I was relying on Megan Zabuda uh, to start. Um, but really, you know, as the board is familiar with in the past, the institution property, like the crucial is a good sample. Um, we, you have to, you have to get county and we will dispose of property. And um, so this isn't saying this is what the project can be used for, or the deal you're going to make, you're just seeking.
Proactive authorization to allow us to sell it. Should that be what we want to do?
Similar to another article where you just, it's excessive surplus, you're allowed to.
Right.
So.
And then the stabilization account is to.
Oh, yeah.
And this connected item thirteen as well. The.
Uh, it is, that's true. So um, that, so Department Revenue came back. Um, and said that our article from twenty twenty one is not clear enough, basically.
And to just be clear, this is the use of canvas impact.
That's sorry. And so, yeah, that's, that's right. So the three percent of the sales that we get from the host community period, which is separate from the taxes. We get three percent of community impact payments. Um, and so the town authorized a stabilization account for that. And then, as you said, Jeff, the next item will be how to spend that money, but um, apparently Department Revenue thought we need more clarification. So we got the original language in town council, we went back to town council, he said, it's better language.
Any questions on either of these articles? Then I would accept the motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the following draft controls, P disposition of one summer street. And U stabilization account as shown and forward to finance committee for review and comments.
All in favor? Very good.
Mr. Chair, can I also know about, about um, the preparation of articles? So even as, well, actually, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so even as uh, Justin, uh, Martin, as Justin Markle pointed out, he said term controls, just so you know, that's the draft articles for town meeting. And um, so he's got a number from the water sewer enterprise accounts and relevant to that. But there's, there's, as you all familiar, there's a significant amount of, of articles that still come. I was just reluctant to force you to even show the enterprise accounts. You know, I didn't want to assume that you were going to include the rates and the rates are reflected in this, this, right? Similarly, with the general fund, similarly with free cash allocation. Um, and there's a number. So I just, let you know, like, there's, there's still a good amount in the works. And that before.
All right, before we leave the downtown meeting topic. Couple, I think it was last meeting, just want to verify that I heard correctly. Uh, we were talking about all the articles pertaining to the um, the charter. And we said each one of them has to be done individually. That right?
Well, I.
I believe that's what was said.
That's what was said.
Yeah, because it had to be moved every.
Each change has to be independently.
Because they didn't want it as a consent to.
Correct.
I, I don't recall we got confirmation. We can, you don't, I don't remember either.
But yeah, I mean, we should be able to check another town that did its charter a year ago or something and see what they did, right? If we can get some precedence that.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, we can ask town council, but yeah, it, it was just, it was one of those that, that was, it's going to be a very long meeting.
Yeah, I think, but I have seen other towns. And this is up to the moderator, of course, but I think I've seen other towns do the, something similar to the following. Yeah. You know, they read, they say, um, you know, the, they read the items, they say. A, B, C, and if somebody yells out, hold.
Like consent, yeah.
It's like a consent. They yelled out, hold, then that gets pulled off of the consent. So that if there's something that comes up that somebody wants to talk about, that gets pulled. Otherwise, everything else gets approved in one fell swoop. And I, I wish we could do something like.
As I've learned, although that sounds practical, I don't trust the common with the Massachusetts, it's still laws that it always follows.
Yeah.
So I, I can just. We'll just.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll put a plug in one more time that town meeting is Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty three.
We hope it's only Monday.
Exactly.
Time seven.
Seven o'clock.
In.
Val.
Val.
Yeah.
No, not the gymnasium.
Yeah, the Mother's Day.
Exactly.
I don't.
A lot of flowers and candy.
All right, anything else on item twelve? No, Mr. Chair. All right. Uh, item thirteen, which is a policy for the cultural district enhancement fund.
Right, so um, so past this is town administrator Megan Zabuda had presented to the board and the board was interested in it, uh, but the board uh. Generally, you know, basically kind of uh. Considered policy changes over two weeks. So this is, no, no change for what you saw.
And she did a great job.
So I will move to approve the proposed cultural district enhancement fund. Policy and application for H C A community impact payments receipts.
Second.
All in favor?
Excellent.
Thank you, and I beg.
No. Hey, Mason.
And I was worried. Um, all right, item fourteen, as we discussed, the. Meeting will be tomorrow evening.
Yep.
Justine, do you want to give us just a very brief synopsis of what we're expecting here?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, first, we did have a building committee meeting last Monday um, to discuss the um. The possibility of uh, the stretch codes being introduced, um, the often stretch codes. So um, the. The O P M and the designers in H V A C engineer have um, put together a proposal where it so. Basically, they wanted to advise us as a building committee, and we all agreed that it was a good idea. Um, is to actually wire it so it can be changed from gas fired, which is what it is now, to electric. Once the gas fire has reached the end of its usable life. Um, so that way, you know, we're still, and, and we're still taking the rest of the code. The, the code upgrades into mine, you know. Solid envelope for the building, you know, the same, and I can't speak to a lot of it because I don't have it in front of me, but it's, you know, you're, you're creating an H V A C system. Um, for the size of the building, you know, a lot of times in the past, I believe. That H V A T systems have just been kind of installed in buildings and they're not necessarily as efficient because they're trying to either heat a building or whatever that's too big. So um, so right sizing the H V A C system. Um, so that's all still going to happen. Um. And so, but again, I am not, I am not the engineer on the project, so. So that's, that's all I'll say about that, but we did make that decision. Um, and so for tomorrow night. The uh, the goal is again, um, Mary, Mary Brinley had brought it up at a couple of meetings. Um. You know, we really want the information to get out to the boards who are going to be, you know, who, who are, who we really need support from. Um, as in addition to the residents, um, and there seems to be a lot of information out there right now. And we want to make sure that everybody's hearing the same information to start. So um, so basically it's going to be kind of an introduction, soup to nuts of how we got here. Um. And then the opportunity again for um, for the board members to ask questions, for finance committee, for school committee, for, for select board members. And for the public after the rest of the boards have had their chance. Um, you know, and again, because I'm hoping that, you know, I'm sure that. Everybody has heard from different constituents and has different questions that have been brought to their attention. So as board members, we can ask those questions as well. And then hopefully those will be answered. Um, you know, I, I will say again, I, I was talking to someone this weekend, and this is just my little, little three cents. Um, you know, there's a lot of talk out there about, you know, it, it not being a transparent process. And, and we, no one knows what happened or what's going on. We'll tell you the last three meetings are recorded. Last I checked on Saturday, there had been nineteen views and twenty views respectively of meetings. Um, please watch them. We, there, there's almost, a lot of it is spelled out in the meetings. Um, and there is still the website. Uh, they are working on the F A Qs. I know that we've heard that before. They are still working on that right now. They're working on the presentation for tomorrow night. So once they get through that, then um, they're hoping, um, they're hoping that will be up shortly as well. Um. And I think that's all I have.
Um. I was unable to find a copy of the feasibility study online. I was told it was available at some point.
Okay, I can find it because I know it's, I know it's on Google Docs, but I can definitely find it. Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you remember if they said, Justine, uh, we mentioned that. The building's been designed to be wired to allow changes once the gas fire.
Correct.
You know what? Did they estimate a cost for an exchange over?
Some. Okay.
Um, no, so we didn't talk about that. Um, my personal opinion, having no information, which is how I like to roll, never. Um, is that, you know, if we think about it. As, as you mentioned quite frequently, David, um, we're still paying for boilers, correct? Because they're quite expensive.
We're, well, we're paying for boilers that we were told were going to be converted over.
Correct. But we're, we're, we're still paying for it, correct? Because they were quite expensive.
I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year out of our.
Right. So to that point, whatever system gets changed out in twenty years is going to be expensive. Whether it's a electric system that reaches the end of its usable life or a gas fired boiler system that reaches the end of its usable life. Either of those is going to cost money to replace because that's just the way it is.
I want to be careful, the technical conversation, we're really trying to save for tomorrow. Um, but if you want to go ahead.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of questions about all of that, but I will save those questions for tomorrow.
And again, I qualify that with.
I, I, I get it. That's, I'm not an expert either, which is why I can't come up with questions.
Hi, so I will underscore David's earlier point, just calmly that there are a lot of people who are angry um, and want to be heard. And I agree with David's comment that making sure we have space in meeting tomorrow to hear from the public is very important.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments on the green medal school building? Yes, Natasha?
Hi, uh, thank you very much. I just had a question about the setup for. Audio to confirm because I know at the joint budget subcommittee meeting, it was quite difficult for those remote to be able to hear because we only had that one. Microphone and I wanted to make sure that there was consideration that would be changing that to ensure that. Folks who are online could hear conversations because we're all going to be possibly speaking. Or how, how would that be planned or worked is, I don't know if that could be maybe a quick like email in the morning can go out like of expectations of setup or something to folks.
But I'm, you're looking at the setup. Uh, I'm, I am the I T, I am the.
I know, I know. Thank you.
So I, you asked, is there assurance that it will be considered to enhance the, the microphone setup? Yes, I assure you that there's.
We are trying.
I will tell you, it's probably going to look very similar to how it looks because I don't have more microphones. These, what you're looking at are for a different setup. So I have what is at, I have what's there. I, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I have. I will try to like maneuver it better. I will try to like in the, in the less than twenty four hours I have. Uh, I'm not going to be able to procure more microphones.
Would, would, would the owl work better?
Unlikely.
Okay.
For the location of the. Microphone itself, whatever's picking up the, the voices.
Uh, you perhaps, yeah, I can move that around.
I don't, I don't know. Cause we, you, you don't know until you hear it, you know?
That's what I was thinking of just because we, the school committee had a hybrid meeting recently. We encountered a similar thing where you had one microphone. And at each school committee member was, you know, trying to speak and not everything could be heard remotely. So I, I just wonder if. At the onset, we just have an expectation where we have the microphone where people, if we come up to it and speak at a certain place. Um, if that is the more feasible way, I, I imagine not going to be able to provide more microphones in twenty four hours. But I just wanted to make sure that because we're not sharing it, I know you are not sharing it, is we, the, the select board. Um, that if the, the green medal, they might need to have some guidance on, on what the recommendation would be to approach that. Um, setup at some point. So anyway, just, just some thought there and also not knowing how many people will be in person as well.
I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maggie.
Hi, um, I don't know how they do it, but the library does a nice job with um, hybrid meetings.
They, they now. They have now.
And, and I'm assuming the, the size of the meeting is part of the challenge here.
Yeah, I've attended some, you know, decent sized um, meetings at the library that. Were good, but I, but I don't know the technology. I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
I think we can link multiple hours together, but I think there's a limit on that, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have.
Okay.
A degree in international studies. I will do the best I.
I have a degree in owls.
Very.
Thank you, Greg.
Any, any other comments or questions about the meeting tomorrow evening? All right. Item fifteen, F Y twenty four. General fund budget.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, um, a lot to kind of inform the board of, I can kind of sort of like. I have office for the group and while like the overwhelming amount of, let me try to break it down. So yes, we did get Governor Healy's uh, which is, um, we heard through the house one, within the house one. Um, and you heard, I think Representative Hogan mentioned cherry sheets. That's just, that's just slang. Um, and you heard, I think Representative Hogan mentioned cherry sheets. That's just, that's just slang for the color of the paper that comes in local ways.
Usually anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I think in this, in Beacon Hill, it's, yeah, so, um, so, so we get that and then we get the notification from Division of Local Services, which is part of Department of Revenue. This is like, guess what? Here's how much money according to this version of, of the budget is what's going to come down to individual towns and of that. Anyway, so that's, that's one aspect and, and I, and I forwarded to the board and the finance committee and the, and the school committee, um, just how that breakdown looks for help. In addition to that consideration, there was, oh, we also got um asset allocation schools assessment, so we've, we've been waiting on that. So my, my estimation, my projection was just a two and a half percent increase. However, they came back with a, let's say it's six percent increase. I mean, look up. So, yeah, so I had, I had estimated um two and a half percent increase for asset bet and they came back as six point six, which is a forty eight thousand dollar difference. Um, and then and then health insurance, so health insurance, um, I'm a little frustrated. So we had been told by health insurance provider, which is Maya, um, that our, our premium rate is going to be uh five point three seven. Usually round up slightly, so I was, I was kind of factored five point four. Um, and then we found out that it might have been an error. It's actually five point nine, so I would actually factor six percent increase for health insurance increase. All that being, all those different factors. The, I had provided this left word about the budget in, in January. As of now, we are in the black by forty two thousand. I was just about to bring it up in the mic, stretchy moved over. Forty two thousand one hundred and twenty. So, um, at this stage, I recommend to the board, because it's your, because it's your budget now, I recommend to the board what to do with that money. Um, if you decide you not to budget for it, then that is a, that could be a consideration um, to reduce the tax rate. However, it's pretty miniscule, forty two thousand. I do recommend um to provide approximately twenty thousand dollars to the library, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, which would be to cover.
From, from the forty two?
From the forty two, and then five thousand dollars for personnel. Um, and, and that's was, that's a little on, that is on me. I'll take ownership of that. So that I didn't factor in their minimum wage increases for their ages. And then for the IT costs, it's, um, it's, yeah, but I was trying to remember what the, what the fifty thousand dollars paid for. It's phone support if I recall. So that's where we are. Um, originally, it was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars before I found out some of these other factors and I was, and I was prepared to, to recommend to the board fund that you got the fire chief for the fire decision, but I don't have that money now, so I can't. But that's still, even if you, even if board assess my recommendation, um, that leaves twenty two thousand dollars. And, and I don't have a recommendation at this time for that. It's not thirty five thousand dollars. So I wouldn't be able to plan it, do that means that there are other, there are other possibilities where it could consider. Uh, my recommendations for these are free cash. So, um, if you look at my free cash recommendations, which I'll bring up. Uh, you could, you could change uh my recommended allocation to any number of sources. Capital is a capital stabilization, maybe one of those sources. Right? So if you, if you, if you, uh, if you took, if you reduced um my capital stabilization recommendation, which is now fifty thousand dollars, and you brought it down to um fifteen thousand dollars, which would, you know, in order to pay for the thirty five thousand dollars for this um community assessment study, that's possibly, I, I, I do feel right now, I don't have a solid recommendation as to how to give that.
If we start, if we start with twenty two, in reality, then we only have to come up with thirteen thousand dollars to make. I say, um, I realize.
Yeah, yeah.
So then you look at the, um, the items that we've got on, um.
Yeah.
On free cash, which I'm looking at here.
You're looking at the bottom of the sheet?
I'm looking at the.
Looking now.
I'm looking at the middle.
Looking at like.
And.
Yeah, this.
I don't like touching stabilization generally.
Yeah.
Uh, not just general stabilization, but capital stabilization. Uh, so I think those would be out. OPAP is minimal as it is.
True. So you know, you, you asked the right question. I, I, as I'm, I'm just, unfortunately, I don't have, I was a little taken aback by the my thing the other day, so I thought to factor in, but I, I am prepared to come back to the board, so the recommendation.
I, I guess my point is, is there a place that we have overshot or overestimated, uh, what it might cost for something.
There's sixty nine hundred remaining in free cash.
Sixty nine hundred remaining, you take that. At that to the twenty two, we're now at the twenty eight, now we only have to find, and I say only in a.
Let me, I think there's, there's another.
Well, that's the point. Is, is that is the, is the police cruiser actually fifty five thousand dollars?
But there, but there's, there's another factor. So at the budget subcommittee, um, be. I was asked to, to present a consideration that I had had discussions with Superintendent Brian Moss about, which again, I'm still not even entirely sure with it, what the school committee may be advocating, but I'm just, this, the discussion of the, of the budget subcommittee was to consider the two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, which was the remaining um balance from unspent special education circuit breaker from FY twenty two, so free cash. And to allocate it to the school department for FY twenty four. And that two million dollar free cash number that we have was also was like a, of a portion of that two million dollars was the two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of unspent special education circuit breaker. Um, and the school committee members of the budget subcommittee had asked the budget subcommittee or had, had basically endorsed that two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars could school me. My rea, my response to, actually, um, they went a little further. They'd said of that two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars um, could be uh allocated towards a stabilization fund, which would require a vote of the select board and the school committee to withdraw from.
A, a new stabilization?
They have a current existing.
Their current. But all of a sudden, we would be able, we would have control of what's spent out of their stabilization fund?
We're supposed to have it anyways. It's like, it's a joint vote. It's, um, it's, it's for the special education.
Correct. That was the direction I got from Lori Ford about how, how we, how that would operate. That, that's what she. Better guide. And then, um, and then the other two hundred thousand dollars or so, um, to go just towards dental operations for the school department. And my, my advice to this department, um, for the purposes of town meeting vote is to just kind of break that down a little further, perhaps school IT, school facilities, school personnel, whatever, however that might be. Whatever the purpose may be, but that, so again, that's not my recommendation. I'm only briefing the board as to what was presented that, uh, consideration. So what I'm saying is that I, I crunched the numbers to try to see how, how, how a reduction of, of the free cash towards these other items would look of two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, so. So kind of messes with some of the other numbers because I, I kind of had to make up for that. The, the capital item I dropped was the uh HVAC improvements to this building. And then, um, and then I messed with some of the numbers like so nice. I, I adjusted some. Right, so that, so. In order to.
Is that, is all of this stuff included in the sheet we're looking at tonight?
So I, I, yes. Until, until this thirty five thousand dollars, I was sure, I was briefed that. A lot to take in.
So can I ask a question, um, actually about stabilization because I know David just alluded to the fact that he doesn't like to touch at either the stabilization account. I realized general stabilization that the intent of that is, is the health of the, of the town.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, you, you're consistently putting in a specific percentage we aim for because you want to make sure that the town is protected in the event of, of an issue, very large. So, the capital stabilization account.
Yeah.
What do we, I, I know originally or before I was in, a long time before I was involved, I remember hearing that, you know, that was supposed to be for the new fires or like it was put together. So, are we saving for a particular item now for capital stabilization?
So that's the draw. So we have withdrawn from the capital stabilization in my first year here and it was for, just to kind of fill in the, I think we needed a cruiser. There was a couple of things. But, but the significant draw withdrawal was, um, for the purchase of the land for the new car station.
Yeah.
So, uh, right now capital stabilization is at.
The fourth, uh.
Well, that'll be.
Three seventy two.
Yeah, three seventy.
Yeah.
So, so no, there's.
I, I, I think the important aspect is that, I mean, yeah, this year we had two million in free cash, which for whatever reason, year, last year, we had significant free cash.
Yeah.
It wasn't that long ago that we had negative free cash. And if we ever come to a year where we have negative free cash and we've spent our our capital stabilization fund and we have nothing there, we can't replace a potentially necessary item, whether it be a DPW item or a police or a fire or some, some other critical aspect. And if we don't prepare for that, shame on us. So that's why, um, in my eyes, capital stabilization is critically important to make sure it does not dwindle down to where it's essentially nothing because that's our emergency fund. And in the, in the reality, three hundred thousand dollars that we've got now is not much when we could have a disaster on our hands with any given situation. You know, God forbid, uh, something happens to this building and suddenly we have a problem. And what do we do?
Right, we, so that's true. I, I think depending on the, the size of the problem.
Yeah.
Uh, we might have to open general stabilization. Yeah, it, that, that would be a prompt. So in the, and speaking of general stabilization, the last major withdrawal was um a million dollars for the feasibility study for the. And, and we've been winning that money back in, which is great.
Because that money, we can be, we would get reimbursed for that.
We do not.
When do we get reimbursed?
No, I believe.
We get, we get.
Guys.
We do get a percentage. Yeah.
I'll, I'll get.
Yeah.
And remember, that discussion was controversial itself to withdraw for that purpose.
No, I know.
I mean, we're, I think we're already doing. We have financial policies. I know that, you know, there's been requests to discuss them again, but that recommends levels for these things that was evaluated or recommended by our own finance committee, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'm, they're both higher than what's in the stabilization in terms of keeping the town in good fiscal health right now.
No, I was just curious about this because I know, like I said, I know general stabilization is a, it's a, you know, but for capital, I was just curious whether, you know, I, there's no judgment as to what we're putting in and what we have in it or anything else. That was just more for my own.
I think you're right. That is enough. What?
For thirty five thousand dollars, obviously, that was not.
Great. I don't have my run up to town meeting timeline ahead of me. When, when are we locking in for the warrant article about it?
Do a quick search.
And any chance that, and I think I know the answer to this because I tried to look at past email. No chance that ACB is going to use any of their, um, their free cash per se.
I need to follow up with that.
Excess and deficiencies.
Yeah.
Another one that gets, you know, they get sort of a free rein on what they do. There's nothing we can do to sort of push back.
Well, it's interesting because according to their presentation, our, um, if I'm reading it correctly, our student population didn't increase.
No, but they, they base it, I think it's, if I remember correctly, it's based on like five years ago or some, because the last time we really got, when they went for their new building, maybe that's when it was. And they went for their new building or improvements on the building, we got screwed because, excuse my language, because, uh, was based on what the student population was several years before. Our student population at that time was much higher and we got allocated based on that number versus what it was at the current time. And so it hurt us relative to how much we paid towards their improvements, the building, the MSBA project they did. But I don't know if it's an annual thing, um, impact, if they charge us based on annual student population. I forget.
I mean, the, the total students we have going there are. Sixty eight.
Sixty eight.
That's it.
Um, so Mr. Chair, you'd ask.
Yeah.
When, so the, the select board is scheduled to finalize the warrants on April eighteen. The finance committee is advised to provide their comments to my office. I can get it to the select board in time for me, maybe by April eleven. So not much time. There's one, there's two select for me.
What? Okay.
And I, I would suggest that we should, based our uh number of meetings that we have, based on the number of every other weeks that we have, if we need to need to discuss important items on budget.
That, that's always the case. However, yeah, I'm just wondering.
No, I get.
And you know that there was conversation at the select, at the budget subcommittee meeting, um, in addition, the, the one thing that we, that I, that was brought up is, is bringing, is if for some reason the, um, the select board get elected to put that money back, um, the two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars to the schools. Um, it's just a recommendation that we've heard time and time again from, you know, from finance committee not to use free cash for operating some.
Correct.
Um, so we did remind them of that. The other thing was that, um, uh, the school committee chair did bring up the, um, the want for a uh tribal meeting um regarding the budget. We did not get a chance to really discuss the budget and originally we were going to try to do a tribal meeting with school and budget. That clearly wasn't going to work, so, um, I said I would bring it up tonight.
You are?
And here I am.
Chris, David, thoughts on a tribe board?
Way if we can find time.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Would you prefer a weekday or, or a weekend?
No, a weekend.
You said not a weekend?
You said not a weekend?
If you, if the board would like, I can, I can communicate with Brian Ross to see, because I know the school committees schedule for finance committee. Would you like me to sort of like poke around and see?
Poke around, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think. Yeah, I think getting, yes, I think so. Um, but what would we want to have as the agenda? Do we want to simply say, here's where we left off, you know, at the end of the February meeting? I don't want to rehash three separate more presentations, et cetera, et cetera. How do we want to structure that? How would it, how would it best facilitate a constructive conversation?
What's, what's, what's the subject?
The budget.
I understand the subject, but like what, like, like, you know.
What's the, what's the end game?
For everyone that we go into, it ends up being one overriding topic, like is, is there, is there an overriding topic? Uh, and not to be, you know, old Q them, but just that's, but what's the, what's the, what's the goal of? You know, there's going to be a conversation between the three chairs of those three committees and what's, what's the goal of each? There, what, you know, what's that, the agenda? I don't, I don't.
I can have that.
If the, um, majority of people involved want to do it on a weekend, I have to, I'll have to suck it up and do it, but I'd rather do it weekly. But, you know, because we kill, you know, everybody, nobody wants to get up early to do it, so we end up doing it, you know, ten, ten o'clock in the morning and then within three hours and the whole day is lost, you know, for whatever reason, but.
So I, I think that part of what, what came out of the last, the budget meeting, if I remember correctly, the joint budget meeting. You know, that, that is, it is still, it is still a discussion that we haven't had a discussion even talking about what an override looks like or why or anything like that. So, um, you know, I think that is something that, um, you know, we can I, I think having, you have the conversation and then, you know, go, go from there.
Is that, is that conversation for now or for after town meeting, given that we're not going to move forward with that for this town meeting, obviously? So it seems like for this. So it seems like for this. The conversation has to do with the line items on our particular budget. And where people feel that the line items on our particular budget can be can be or should be adjusted. And I and we feel right now presumably that the budget that's being proposed is appropriate based on. What we understand. Others might have different opinions and might be able to propose other uh suggestions for what for what happens. Would we be able to change thing? I don't know. But hearing the arguments.
Depends on what the changes would be. So if um. Generally, you look at the biggest the biggest expenses. So um. School committee is the biggest biggest expense um. But I understand that they are the school committees considering uh an article of the town meeting to seek. More more funds than I recommend to the board. Um if that is the case, I do add is right now I do not have a recommendation as to where the 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 to adjust my balance budget proposal. Um and so in an override is the sort of like. The fault.
That's not. They they identified, they identified.
Where they wanted. Well, wait. So to answer your question, David, um you can go to you can you can pass uh uh you can you can pass the article. For the for the appropriation of the general fund at town meeting and and that that can result in an unbalanced budget. But you can't set a tax rate on an advanced budget. So we so we would have to go to town meeting in October, as we normally do. And to adjust the budget according to whatever is passed at the end of that week. So if if the if my understanding of God, but I'm not sure. Um if my understanding is of the five hundred or so thousand dollars additional funds that the school committee is requesting. And if that requires an override, then that that has to be proposed at in the fall.
What happens if that fail?
Then you've gotta fix the budget. You gotta fix the budget with what you got.
So can if we're gonna have that conversations, it'll be part of the conversation in any future meeting.
Yeah.
Um can you give us the? Actual language for that, like, you know, provide us what what does what does it mean today? What does it mean tomorrow? What does it mean for the future? And then and then what is it? What is the process?
For the for an override.
For an override.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
We've heard it. We've heard about it on on several different conversations.
Yeah.
And different people who have suggested it or anything else is is differing opinions of what it actually means. It would be nice to. Have it so that we're all in the same room at the same time.
Sure.
So everybody has the same understanding of exactly what it means.
Sure.
On on the, you know, on the on the continuum and then see what it see what it ends up being um, you know, as far as what's the process? Like, what what do we have to do as a community to um seek an override? And how how did that process work? And I guess to to the question that was just asked as well, what if it fails? You know, if you have what what happens when it fails, if it fails to the budget into the items that are um. Suggested within the override, would you not?
Basically have.
But you.
Yeah.
You might if they um I'm not entirely sure. I'm I one option. So I think what Justin said, John, like you were just saying, is that you have to find the budget elsewhere. That's or if you if you. So we submit a balanced budget based on our expected revenue. And if that revenue is an override, um sometimes. You know, if you really get into that sort of like fiscal hot water, um the bottom revenue will reduce your free cash. So they'll they'll just take their money from you.
Well, I think so. Like I said, I think that I I originally heard I I thought I saw something. And again, it's everything's still developing. But I thought that their suggestion was actually to take it out of the general stabilization.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
The the.
So it's not. So their suggestion is not an override. Their suggestion is generally.
Oh, so yeah, we're we're complaining a few things. Um my understanding is that the school committee will be discussing at their Thursday meeting. A warrant article, which, as Justine just said, the recommended funding source is general stabilization, which would be a one-time funding source. For an operational. Need if I'm following all this.
Yeah, well, that that would be the case if it was operational, because next year the money wouldn't be there.
Correct. So it's it would only fix, it would only get them the money for this one year. So I'm not sure what.
Although it doesn't cause her. So unlike where it's like for the the way of the.
The override becomes an override. The range is your that's you.
So and I think we wanna separate that out from what. So that's this year versus what Chris is talking about, which is let's have a conversation about what that looks like, not for this year. But if we wanted to do it at some point in the future, what are the factors we should really be considering? Like picking up correct the grid. You're talking about future, not this particular. I I would concur.
Yeah.
I hope.
But I but I think that that's so it's.
It's it's a future, right?
Yeah, but we do. So and that that is the thing is that is something that's been continuously brought up is, you know, that there are people who believe. That we need an override or we need a discussion for an override.
And um.
And I'm I personally will go on record saying I am not support. I don't support it. But I think that um I understand the need to have a higher level conversation.
Yep. Natasha?
Yes, hi. I just want to clarify the article that is being proposed by the school committee. Is um multiple funding sources is not exclusively for general stabilization. It proposes to see if they will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from general stabilization or. Other available funds in the treasury, the combined sum of twenty two million, seven hundred and forty four thousand. So I just wanted to clarify, not to dispute or discuss the matter, but as you were talking about it, I wanted to just clarify that particular point.
What do you mean by funds in the treasury?
Monies that the town has or will be earning.
In in.
That's language that is used in other. Appropriations and warrants.
I'm not.
I might not gonna discuss that right now, but I just wanted to clarify that it was only looking to the general stabilization.
Yeah, I just don't know. I just.
Thank you.
We're not gonna debate this right now, but I don't know if you can front present a warrant article that says we can either. Raise taxes or we can do this or we can do that, but we want this money, which is essentially what it sounds like.
So you were referencing the the term charter. Uh I have to bring it up. Sure, I see them.
I mean, there's there's right. There's specific language in the warrant for different things. And but I think that when we use that language. We know where that source is coming from.
That's right, because it's referenced in the um in our appendix, we give an omnibus budget, which identifies the expenses and the revenue to 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 balances.
Right.
Um so this this proposal would not be identified down to this budget. So when I so I would we would submit to the. Power revenue and unbalanced budget. Why? So um. Right.
And and Greg, does the phrase available funds in the treasury have any legal meaning?
Yeah, I know. I that's that sounds about. I mean, I don't know the past articles, but that sounds about right.
But where would it come from? It wouldn't come from any particular stabilization fund.
Sure.
No, I I think that's just general property. I think as as money comes into the town, we we have cash. No, just in the course of the year, like we, that's how we that's how we that we break our checks from us as the money.
But all that money is allocated through the budget or it goes into a fund.
Correct.
So that's just.
It's accounted for before it comes in.
So where where would?
There's no other.
Yeah.
There's no other.
There's no surplus funds in the treasury that's not already in a stabilization fund.
Stabilization.
Yeah.
Sitting there.
Right.
Collecting interest.
Yeah, that's true. Um right, there's no, there's no.
I'm not saying.
So if I said, if I said, Greg, find ten thousand dollar fund, take it out of the treasury, what would you do?
You would say what you said.
I mean.
You would say, I can't, I can't.
Can't can't write that check. I would um. Do. Okay, so we we get we come to this on a different scale. We we come to this predicament every fiscal year. Because inevitably um contracts, uh gas prices change, uh whatever, like the the cost of electricity goes up. And we didn't. And for whatever reason, the projections didn't match what it relates to the fiscal year, like nine months before. So we do budget transfers. That that's a common occurrence. We identify where the money is, like where we we do expect, like for what are recent expenses below than we projected. And then we transfer. Like, you'll see those budget transfers the next couple of months as you always do. Not to that scale, though. It's not gonna be.
Yeah, those are, yeah, nickel and dime relative.
Like that, but there, but as the content of the treasury, like that money exists because we because we have. We the Department of Revenue trusts our projections as we've been getting excess tax bills and property tax bills. That money's. But the Department of Treasury is they they are very, they require a certain level of precision, of course, and. Right, because we can't default.
Okay, so let's go back to, there's two kind of topics here. There's the potential. Cool article, which they will discuss on Thursday. For this town meeting. And then now we're discussing what would. An organized approach to an override look like at some hypothetical point in the future. And going back to, I think, a comment. Somebody made maybe was David a few minutes ago. If we were gonna have that conversation, what would, you know, an organized approach to an override look like? What would the different options for an override? What would potential, you know, um you know, uses for that, how we would decide?
What are the costs?
The amounts, how would we decide the amounts and the allocations, all that, all of that. If it's what's my point is that? You would suggest to have that after the current town meeting.
Yes.
So we do that. So. Oh, and so and and what I what I'm asking the board is I'll go and talk to the other two chairs in the finance committee, the school committee. So is am I interpreting this, which is correctly, that we want this conversation about what an override looks like, but we want it after the town meeting? Okay.
Yeah, and if we're gonna have a meeting before town meeting. It would be to basically tell us where the where our line items are wrong, you know, just.
Yeah.
Have that discussion.
I don't know that that level of anonymity is gonna be helpful at a meeting.
So I'm. So I represent.
I think it's appropriate for us. I don't know if that's appropriate.
Our line. Yes. Go ahead, Greg.
No, and so it so I I don't go into like my name of like dollars and cents, but I I do go give the general review of the various departments have changed. With the exception, of course, of schools. But I um. I think David's question was in regards to the charter and what the requirements are for submission of an article. And it's and and section two seven says. With the exception of citizens' positions and ongoing union negotiations, any proposed warrant article requesting expenditure of town funds. Shall include an estimated cost and a proposed funding. Warrant articles requesting expenditure of town funds that do not include estimated costs, that will be disqualified by its length. So so is, okay, well, so then according to the school's council, they they feel that the proposed article does meet this requirement.
So what is it? So we'll obviously have to have it through our council as well, correct?
Uh that's also true, because the next section is without, with the exceptions, positions, all proposed warrant articles shall be subject to review by town.
So, yeah, so I think that I I mean, there are a couple of things going on. And I know, you know, people wanna exclude it, wanna discuss the budget. You know, there was a there was a want to have more of a robust discussion. Um you know, after the after the meeting, we just didn't get a chance to.
Yes.
Um if you wanna talk to, and this is my personal opinion, if you wanna talk to the the other two chairs. And and kind of get a kind of get a temperature check on what they feel would be helpful before the meeting. If anything will be helpful and productive before the meeting. Um and then if not, then let's try to come up with something, you know, in the early fall, like September. Like when we really start.
I thought it should be before that.
Well, summer. So, well, okay, but but so. Think June, July, August, you've got summer months. So, you know, I mean.
I think you're trying to do it in in June as early.
Alright.
So the town meeting ends and then before we get caught up in the next time.
If you to do it on the run up to um, you know, so try to get it before, because I know that this discussion is. And then and also in the fall, we'll be dealing with the school as well.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I will. I will bring that to their two chairs who are both on the call right now. I'm listening, so they're aware of the conversation.
Hello, chairs.
The other thing I wanted about that override is I think there's the assumption when I listen to the February meeting is that if it's an override, it's exclusively for schools. And I don't think that should be the default assumption. I think there are needs on the town side. Senior population made that very clear today. A deputy fire chief. Funding for road maintenance and improvements like go on and on. So one of that elements, the conversation we need to bring is that the needs are simply not only on the school side. And I think that. Was not elevated to the the point it needed to be at the February meeting.
Yeah, I I go back again. I just go back to the cost. I mean, you could you could say everybody needs something in town and 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 you're a hundred percent right. But all of these people who want to age in place and keep people in their houses. And you mentioned, you know, keeping people in their houses as the cost rise. You know, that you mentioned that when you're talking to um Jamie and Kate. And. If we do an override and a debt exclusion and we give as much as we can. It's it's gonna be it's it's.
It's gonna. It's not sustainable. It's basically.
Well, that's that's the other thing. It has to get passed. That's the other part. It has to get passed at the ballot.
But there are people who feel it is sustainable, and so that conversation needs to be.
Yeah, yeah. See, not only does it have to pass, uh it's gotta pass for an override, two thirds majority at town meeting. And then it's a majority vote at the ballot.
The ballot.
And two thirds of town meeting, when you're when you're going to impact people the way that uh that certain amounts of money. We don't know. I don't know if we're gonna get two thirds.
For, yes, and I think that's part of that conversation.
Yeah.
Um but that's not for tonight. That's for that.
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right. I will. I will connect that with the other chairs. Now that's about a future meeting. Um we'll wait for the school committee about, you know, to have their discussion on Thursday um before we make a decision on it. And I'll I'll bring up the concept of that. It would be helpful if that in the meeting. Uh now let's go back to the current. FY twenty three proposal.
For free cash.
For free cash.
Oh, yeah.
I know. I know. We just made a big loop there, but I think that's but but it was an important discussion to have. Um great. You were about to say something.
So that's I'm. Kind of open for any direction the board wants to give. So if the board wants to say. Um yes, go forward with with um drafting the articles for free cash that includes the two hundred fifty seven thousand dollars towards school department. You can tell me that. Don't do it. Don't do that. Um I I'm just and I'm, you don't have to decide tonight. He said there's there's multiple sub four means, you know.
Shouldn't the two fifty seven be in free cash?
It is. Right, I'm sorry. What were you?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
So yes, right now, the of of the two hundred two million dollars for free cash, two hundred fifty seven of that is from unspent special education.
Okay. And we're also looking at, yeah, and and this includes the reduction, unfortunately. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm back.
I am, I am, I am. I will, I will in all likelihood come back to the board to be split uh proposal. For um a recommendation on how to spend that forty two thousand dollars that I.
I'm sorry, the forty two thousand dollars.
From the general.
But that you already talked about spending a fraction of that already just now tonight.
Right, but I just.
Okay.
So I I will also point out, and and I know that this is, you know, but you know, if we do end up making that change. And putting the two hundred fifty seven thousand dollars back to the school, I also do want to point out that the schools are um. You know, we're we're doing about, you know, if you include if you include the bleacher design. Plus the phone, the phone system, the flooring, the teacher device, that's about that's just under a few hundred thousand dollars. Of free cash also.
Uh that's that's true. I I I will say that 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 is also a determination of the capital money.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just saying, like.
Right. Um and we're still, I mean, we might see some small changes in numbers as we go through the next two weeks. Are we not expecting anything then you're?
Those are the major thing like those are the those waiting on.
Yep.
And in the past, we we have not. Generally, the the town budget has uh my like my recommendation to the board has been to reflect House one. Um but then, as as you, as the state elements, we pointed out that budget could change. So which is another reason why in October we make those changes. Or also, you know, through the rest of the fiscal year, maybe. There's still significant um lower receipts haven't gotten yet, like like the um people access tax. So if those come in significantly higher or otherwise, um I could develop recommendations for how to change those projections for FY twenty four, and that can change forever. There's there.
Can somebody online confirm that they can hear us and see us?
Yes.
Thank you. We, we paused the conversation once, uh, once we were booted. But I think we were. Give us a few seconds.
It's actually a time thing. It's like, okay, it's time, it's time. Time for it to go.
No, is it one of those things where?
All right, we'll figure the, uh.
Okay, and back to.
So if there's, I'm just asking if there's any other direction the board wants to do. Otherwise, I would, you can develop your.
I would like to find thirty-five thousand dollars. It may not be possible. I do think it should be a priority for next year if we can't find it this year. I would really like to find it as well. I, I know that's, yeah.
There are preference between operating and.
That's a one-time cost.
Well, you throw in COA, or throw into, you know, capital, the capital line item.
Like I said earlier, Greg mentioned, we've seen, we had twenty-two thousand dollars left on the money. You had said has recently been found.
Yeah.
And if we need thirty-eight thousand, and we've got twenty-two, we no longer need thirty-eight thousand. We now need sixteen thousand.
Also.
And.
Also, Angela, contracts, lessons, toys. So like, there, there are ways I can do it. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, then operation, if it's there, I think that's all right, because then that thirty-five thousand dollars next year, we can, we can apply. And, um, yeah, I do wanna acknowledge the capital item that we would be taking out of order, but I think the needs are great enough. Um, that.
And then the time and strength on it.
And, yeah, I, yeah, I just wanna make sure we're acknowledging that.
Because you said, okay.
Yeah.
What capital items are you looking at that would?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying we're taking it out of order, so it would be whatever would be the next one for next year. It's theoretically, we should say, like every other capital, go to. Well, go and put in the process in the fall, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll have to think about this, but maybe, maybe we do put it as that capital, or keep the capital in this go.
Yeah. Yes. I think, I think that would be, that would be a nice solution, and then we can get that assessment started.
Okay.
All right, that would be a nice thing to see for next meeting.
So barring any other questions, this is our direction. That's all I have.
Any other questions or directions from the board then? All right, Greg, thank you as always for working the budget. It's, yeah.
Moving target.
Uh, moving on to item sixteen, this is to release the real estate appraisal for sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street. Um, or I guess it's, it's sixty-one here, uh, and I believe we discussed this to set up a working group that has now formed and has started to meet.
Yeah, so, so you're correct. So the, so the board had directed that this, um, that this appraisal, this, um, from Greg's story. AM appraisal associate has been begun on sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street, so, um, but the board has been considering an executive session, which is. You're, you're, you're allowed to do that. And so now the board allows you to release it publicly.
Questions are coming in.
No, we've beaten this book pretty good.
I almost released the real estate appraisals report for sixty-one commerce street produced by Greg Story, AM appraisal associate incorporated dated on February twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Thank you. We're gonna have a brief update on alumni bleachers.
Yeah, somebody tore down the bleachers.
Thank you, and moving on to the next item.
Yeah, so, uh, it's good, so the, so the, they came down, I think it was like nine thousand dollars. And, and we have. So, um, but the next plan is to start renting. And so, so for the spring, the fall, fall, spring, and thereafter, maybe, but, um, similar to this whole conversation. Um, my current recommendation is for the board to consider adding to the funding authorization. In the fall for the elementary school to add about two, two million dollars, two and a half million dollars for, uh.
And when would that decision come up? Of the fall.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
But I do have one thing, I, I did bring this up at the budget stuff committee, um, and, and I'll, I'll bring it up in this arena as well. Um, I, I was a little surprised, um, to see a, um, survey go out asking, you know, what the town wants. For bleachers and what they, I, I understand that, um, public input is important, but in. My opinion, um, that gives the impression that we're gonna be able to pay for it. And I think originally the task force was tasked with. Concentrating on bleachers and a press box at the, and possibly an add-on of a bathroom if need be. So. You know, I, I think that, that survey, it had, it had a turf question, I believe. It had, it had several different components to it, which is fine, but. It's just not what, well, first of all, I was surprised that as, you know, as a member of the select board. That we, we had no idea that the, that that survey was kind of going out. Um, but at the same time, I just wanna make sure that, you know, obviously, we just sat through. A very interesting discussion regarding our budget as it is trying to find thirty-five thousand dollars. So, um, and talking about overrides, and talking about a new building, and talking about a senior center. And I just wanna make sure that, um, that the expectations aren't there, that we're going to be able to do. A lot all at once.
You know, lights, track, field, and bleachers, right?
Well, that, so, that, though, um, let me add my context, I don't.
Yeah, no, no, continue.
So, um, it was a joint meeting of the select board and the school committee, and, and those discussions come up. It was undetermined, of course, whether, whether the scope was gonna be to include. Be bathrooms or whatever, but like, but the baseline understanding was it was gonna be bleachers, press box.
Right.
And that was like.
And then possibly the bathroom.
So, the, the board didn't appoint anybody to, to the task force. It is, is technically an extension of my authority as the chief procurement officer. I'd ask Mike Arias, who's the life director, to, to inform me, because it's, because bleachers support school programming. As to what the scope of our requirement qualifications would be to get a project manager, that are for the design. And, um. And so I see this as, as Mike Arias sort of filling that function of, of advising the chief procurement officer. Um, and to say like, you know, the, the next step will be to secure a project manager, and that would be. You tell the project manager what, what you want, and then the project manager sort of like helps develop the, the, the request for qualifications for designers, et cetera. Um, that's what I believe happened. It's, I think of it kind of similar to, um, the one Summer Street, so at the old fire station. Like, I, I put out a survey mock each to see what people thought, but it's an imperfect, uh, method, because you could, you could live in Alaska and. Reply to that survey, um, but it does sort of inform the process. I don't, I'm not, not, I'm taking ownership of what I'm saying, and, and, but I'm also saying. It's imperfect, but it does help inform the process.
I feel like it can be misleading because I don't, we just. I, my concern is we're not gonna end up with bleachers, period, because we're gonna get tied up with all the minutia of, well, should we have turf? Well, should we have this? Well, we need a, a max shack, well, and. My concern.
It'll come back to this, so eventually, but you'll decide how much to ask, how many. So, it, and. It's true.
So, so we set up the, um. Sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street with a much narrower focus based on similar concern. Do we want to invite the chair of this committee back just to have a discussion around the same lines?
You didn't.
Well, but it's not ours. It's the school.
So it's the same, it's mostly the same folks that are on the athletic.
Yeah.
Field, I can't remember the name, but like the, the field advisory group. Um, a lot of this.
So it's just, it, I, I just wanna make sure that the expectation is out there that we. That I believe, and again, I'm one member of, of one board, but I believe that. It is important to get bleachers. Over, again, I use this, I use this with, um, with other things as well, is. We don't want perfect to be the enemy of the good.
Yeah.
You know, we, we need bleachers and, you know, possibly a press box, and then, you know, can we do fades? Like, that's the thing, open them, fine. Can we do a phased approach?
I, I take the direction of the board, and as, as your chief procurement officer, if you tell me that the procurement will be for bleachers, and that's what it's gonna be. So that's it, like, that's what I'm gathering, but, but like, I'm not saying definitively right now, because we're only getting about a hundred, hundred grand to spend on. Project management, so like, I'm just saying, like, when the time comes.
Yeah.
As of right now, I think it should be for whatever we had aligned on in that meeting, which I think Justine mentioned several items, which we did not align on that meeting.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't remember talking about turf or.
So that's all I have about bleachers mystery.
Justine, and you, you wanna?
No.
Do that satisfy your concern, or?
Right now, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was out there. I, I more want the public to know that it's not something that, you know, we're not.
We're not, yeah, we're not looking. Right. Build a football field and, uh, lights, we can't.
Okay. Correspondences, any questions?
All right, move to accepting approved correspondence, A, who I, as shown.
All in favor? Very good, we have once in a minute.
No, we don't.
We do not have one cent a minute.
And I, I didn't get it.
Bigger, or the bigger question, Greg's on vacation.
Already.
No, I, I.
Ah, yes, I, I do as well. Town administrator report.
I'll just give you a super brief, Mr. Chair. We, we did start the sixty-one, sixty-three Summer Street Committee. Um, Brian Burbhouse and Kepua Brown were, uh, selected to be the coaches. Um. And the RFP for the one seventy-three control fire station is available online, and, um, I have a list going with people who are already taking on therapy. Um, the new fire chief graduated from the Mets, Mets Chiefs inspired academy, chief officer program, she's good. And, um, she also notes that, um, fire captain Craig Desjardins. Um, completed his master's degree. Otherwise, I wanted to know, is there a member of the select board that wanted to sit on the downtown ministry assistant town administrator interview? So I've, I've started first round interviews, but, but it is, it is an appointment of the board, so I, I'm just hoping if any of you wanna be. Wanna play along with some sacrifices. You don't have to.
I assume you would do it during the day.
As will we be doing. Yeah.
I don't have to.
I would want to. Yeah.
I would like to as well. I think I might be able to fit it in. Unless somebody else does a burning desire and amount.
I don't have a burning desire, but if you have a meeting that, you know, Jeff can't attend it as an open meeting, just call me. Happy to, you know, between the two of us, at least, we can have a motion, what we think.
How many interviews are we?
So, uh, we had, had, uh, four or fifteen total applicants. We narrowed it down to five or six for the first round interviews. Did, I did, uh. More today. I have two more on Friday.
First round.
So I'd like to get it down to like two or three percent.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from the board?
No, not one.
All right, chair report, um, I'll just repeat, thank you, everybody from the community for, um, reaching out while I was, uh, in recovery and for. Bringing food over and for clearing snow and other tasks that I was, and still am, uh, unable to do. So, and Justine, once again, thank you for taking on the chair responsibilities. So I appreciate it. Um, but that's all I have substantially for tonight, so we will, your board member reports, Chris.
Um, no, we, I guess we won't see Lori Pooh again, right? I work publicly.
Yeah.
She's in her home, Jeff, so thank her for everything. And welcome back, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Uh, welcome back.
Thank you. Oh, great. Five pounds, I can, I can, can't lift it if it's more than five.
Um, I, not too much, we have the, um, so we, we did have the budget subcommittee meeting last week, um, you know, robots and stuff, and it's. Difficult, um, especially at this time, you know, at this point, um. But, you know, I mean, I think, I think we all know, we, we've all seen the budget, we all know what, what's going on, so it's just a matter of. Having the conversations and, you know, getting through our differences. Um, you know, building committee, you know, school building committee have that, um, as well. One thing I did want to address, um, real quick, is that, um, you know, I, I do not. Try very hard not to go on social media, not to go on the social media pages, um, not the public pages, um, but they are shared with people from time to time, and. Uh, what I really, I think I said this last time, also, um, for a different reason, but what I really. Beg of people is if they see something on social media to backcheck. In general, I mean, it's, it's good, it's good practice for the internet in general. Um, but especially regarding this building program, as someone who has been involved in it from the beginning. Um, it is. It's very discouraging to see what's put out there as fact. Um, that is actually factually wrong, and, and it, it, it's, like I said, just as a member of the committee. As someone who has put a lot of time in, um. It, it is very discouraging for everyone, um, or at least for me. I don't know how everyone else feels, so. Um, so just please do your research. Look at the information online, look at the information that is provided on the websites, um, on. The Green Meadow website, the, the public school websites, listen to the meetings. Um, because it, there is a lot that is wrong with social media. And that is my soapbox for tonight.
David.
Yes, just quickly, I wanna, uh, remind folks if they haven't already seen the announcement regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Rental Assistant Program. Um, that is now available for, um, for people who are qualified. Time is running thin on, um, being able to, to apply and, and get, get your name in if, if you are eligible. But, uh, it's out there and it can be really helpful to, uh, people in need. And, uh, the second issue is, uh, we won't meet again before, uh, March seventeenth, so happy same Patrick.
Yes.
Very good.
Exactly.
All right. I will, uh, next meeting is March twenty-first, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Actually, the next meeting is tomorrow night. And second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Long meeting.
Hey, we hit some funny. Two slips.